The West Windsor Township Planning Board Regular Meeting for July 27th is called to order at 7:03 PM. This is to advise that notice time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved for such similar announcements on July 20, 2022, and transmitted to The Times, The Princeton Packet, and The West Windsor and Plainsboro News on July 20, 2022, and filed with the township clerk on July 20, 2022. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Lovero?
Here.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel? Mr. Pankov? Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Here.
Chairman Carr?
Here. Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is the resolution for, I'm sorry, minutes of June 15, 2022. Does anybody have any amendments, changes, mods to that, those minutes?
I have a question. On page three, last paragraph, the third down, it said, "Mayor Morata responded that SRI needs to build the road for the parking lot to Alexander Road." Should that be SRI? I said, should that be SRI that's going to build the road in the parking lot to Alexander Road or Avalon?
Which paragraph is it?
Last paragraph, page three, third line down.
Cindy, do you want to comment on that? I think SRI is correct.
SRI will build that?
No, I think what the mayor was talking about, and the mayor can correct me, it's the portion of the property that Avalon's building where that ends at the parking lot at the train station through some wetland areas to Vaughn Drive. Is that what you were talking about, Mayor?
That's what I was assuming. So who's going to, who builds that?
That's something the town's responsibility is to do that.
So should we? And so I was on the other side, but I don't think this particular one is the one that you just mentioned.
SRI is not going to build the road on the Avalon side?
No, it's, I think what's being discussed here is the portion where Vaughn Drive ends and the extension that the town's going to build to connect to the portion of the Vaughn Drive extension that Avalon is building.
Right, but this, this page three says, "Mayor Morata responded that SRI needs to build the road through."
That's not correct.
Right, that's why, that's why I brought it up. I don't, I think this was probably mixing a couple of things in the minute, so probably, so in this particular case, it wouldn't be SRI.
It would be, it would be the township. You basically take SRI out and insert the township.
Thank you.
Okay, you good with that, Cindy? You good? You have that? Yes?
Yep.
You good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any, any other mods, changes, corrections, questions on the minutes from June 15?
Move to approve as corrected.
Second. Okay, move by Curtis, second by Annis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Any extensions? Joy, can you? Have news? Okay, so it's, um... Everybody but Joy. Okay, motion passes to approve the minutes. Next item on the agenda is resolution for PB 21-11. This is a logistics FNA JDN Enterprises LLC preliminary final major site plan variance and waivers, block 22 lot 5. Are there any changes, mods, additions, corrections, questions on that resolution?
There were a series that were made by my office today. Virtually all of them are just grammatical stuff, things like that. If you want me to walk you through that, I could do so. There was one that you could, that could be described as substantive. It's in your pamphlet and it's condition H. The applicant was asking that some changes be made. It really didn't change a substance. Standover Milske was comfortable with it, and I think it's self-explanatory. As I say, I could walk through the other ones if you want. I don't know that that's necessary.
I'm sorry, what page was that?
It's on page 37, condition H. And there's, right.
Oh, okay, okay.
And in fact, there's a handout sheet for the, for the other changes that were made as well.
You're saying, you're saying that was page 37, Jerry?
Yes. Um, yes. Michael, do you see it?
Okay, yeah. Separate handout for that change. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, and then...
You want to just?
The other things, things like an R, an I should have been an R, land should have been lane, stuff like that. Yeah.
Seeing no other hands raised?
Um, yeah, I have, um, a couple of clarifications on page 41 on NN where it says that 73 trailer spaces shall be used only for trailers. Can we add in, "The trailers shall be kept in good condition and not be used for storage," or some verbiage to that effect, because we know we had discussed that.
Yeah, I think so. That in fact was discussed at the, at the hearing.
Now, I have a question about that. Good condition is very subjective, okay? Not used for storage, that, that one I can agree to, but good condition, it could look like crap and work perfectly, right?
Yep.
So I would be careful with using that term.
Yeah, that's a term that was used at the meeting, but Mike, do you have any suggestions for the language?
I mean, anybody come up with something other than good, you know, maybe in working condition and not used for storage.
Working could look like hell.
Yeah, but as long as it's not used for storage, if they have a trail there.
Yes, who had, who had used the word registered for the other one?
Registered trailers.
Registered or licensed.
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
Is that in one of the others? I don't remember.
No, but that makes sense.
That should be in there too.
Yeah, I would add that, because this way you don't have, like, the registration's full, which is kind of sitting there.
So we want to say they're currently licensed trailers in working condition and that they shouldn't be used for storage. Is that?
Subtle language for me. Any of my colleagues have any issues with that? Okay.
Okay, I've got, um, under PP there, there's something that was referenced on page 31 as part of the discussion, but I want to see it in the condition that the trucks are not permitted to make right turns out of this exit. We're talking about the Westerly driveway that does not have the light on. And they had agreed, and if you look at page 10, number 31, there was some discussion on it, and I believe they said that this was not for trucks to leave, and so I would like that in the conditions.
Andrea, it's the trucks shall not make right turns out of the Westerly access point?
Right. Is that any issue?
Where was that in the findings, please?
Let me go page 10.
It was testified that it's a right in, right out, so that's all I remember.
Um, I had asked the question about trucks, and I was told that was not for trucks. If you look at page 10, number 31, having two driveways, Mr. Sentinel testified, and then he said, "On the other hand, trucks will not be permitted to exit the unsignalized driveway, and will have to loop back on the site to exit at the signalized driveway."
I'm sorry.
Page 10, number 31 in the, on the hearing, on the preamble, or whatever you want to call this piece of it. So I wanted it codified in the conditions so that nobody has to look back here for the verbiage.
That's how it reads. I don't remember the testimony that way.
Um, yeah.
And, and we've been looking at, this is three months to get the resolution, and now we're nitpicking language.
Well, no, it's in here. I just want it in the condition.
I think the boards had this resolution for a long time. It would have been nice prior to this meeting to raise it.
We've only had it for, what, a week or something?
Can you just, can you state one of your issues?
Um, I wanted to add, under PP, trucks are not permitted to make right turns out of this exit. We're talking about the Westerly driveway with the right in, right out.
So that's, the first sentence of PP should be changed also, where it says, "Will be needed to make the right in, right out condition enforceable," maybe not.
Say that again, Jerry?
I, I thought maybe that language about right in, right out condition enforceable, but I take what that's a reference to is that that cannot be done. Okay. What, I would just add to the end of PP then, trucks shall not exit the Westerly driveway. That work for you?
Yes, since they can't make a left turn anyway.
Does 31 reference, 31 did not reference the Westerly driveway?
It says, "Having two driveways."
Right.
That gives trucks two opportunities to enter the site.
Yeah.
Okay, "Such as the first driveway is missed. On the other hand, trucks will not be permitted to exit the unsignalized, which I assume is the Westerly driveway, and will have to loop back at the site to exit only the signalized driveway."
Okay, I recommend then in 31 that we add, if, if that's, if that's referencing or implying that that's the Western driveway, let's take ambiguity out of it and get in parentheses, "Westerly driveway," if that's, if you do that.
It's, it's whatever, it's the one on Princeton Heights Town Road to the left, so...
Do you remember if the unsignalized driveway is the Western driveway?
It's the one that's, if you were coming from, um...
No, that's one towards east Windsor.
No, if you're coming from, from 130, it's the second driveway.
So if you're coming from east Windsor, you pass the first driveway.
The first one's the signalized, the second one...
So that's not the D, the driveway?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, I'm assuming that's what this means here. I didn't write it.
Um, we need to reference that, I think, in number 31, because... Going up and down.
Is it the non-signal?
We're talking about the non-signalized driveway.
Yeah, that, that is Westerly. That's correct.
It's east is east Windsor. We're going the other way, so when it's west, north.
I mean, we have, at this application, we had two driveways. One had, was signalized, one was not. Another, maybe using the, that descriptive might make it more concrete.
That, that's fine. We could, we could change the whole...
Non-signalized.
To, instead of saying Westerly, we should say non-signalized driveway. Those would be better.
I think that would be, provide clarity.
That's fine.
What I, what I did was just add in 31, after unsignalizing, the third line in parentheses, "Westerly."
Okay.
Is that right? So I'm just looking to say that trucks are not permitted to make right turns out of, out of this exit, or if you wanted to say trucks are not permitted to leave this exit, I guess it's the same thing. Trucks are not permitted to, to exit at the unsignalized driveway would be another way to put it.
But doesn't, isn't that what PP says, that, um, "We'll be need to make the right turn in right turn condition enforceable?" With the column, you left turns only, right?
No, 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 no. That one's right turn, right in only, right out only, but not for trucks. The trucks aren't... Right in, right out only for cars. Trucks can make a right in, because part of the reason to build this was to allow, if a truck missed, that way the truck can turn right and still go.
And Frank Petrino, it says unsignalized. If we could just read the paragraph and see that it says unsignalized.
We can put unsignalized in here. I don't, I don't care.
It's in my draft, "Will not be permitted to exit the unsignalized." That's better than west.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think we agreed to do that, and we just said, some people wanted to leave Westerly, and I don't really care.
It's given to Westerly, unsignalized.
All right, just as long as we know that the trucks can't make a, can't leave that, that driveway. Jerry?
You good now?
Yep.
Jerry, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, any other changes?
We've got that. Um, I just wanted to, this is really minor. On 43, under DDD, I think we agreed that the roof and the building, just adding in, "and building," shall be solar ready.
I'm sorry, where, where are you?
Under DDD.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, this side, we can't tell what you're saying. You're too close to the mic. Move a little back and speak louder.
When, when we had the discussion, they said that the, the solar, the roof...
Which number are you talking about?
On 43, DDD. We had said that the building was going to be solar ready under state law, which is the roof and the building. I don't want to get into the, so I'm just wanted to add that the roof and the building shall, will be solar ready. Is, is that okay with everybody? You have no problem?
What's the, explain to the distinction between having the roof regalable for solar panels and the building being solar ready?
Um, under the state regulation, which they had agreed that they were building towards, it involved putting certain conduits and having certain, certain other things in the building, some electronics that would be available in addition to having a roof that's, that doesn't have 40% coverage, and also having a roof that structurally could, could maintain the solar panels, which I assume roof will be solar ready, works with, but that there were a few other minor issues in terms of having conduit and a plan. But if you, if you're going to put solar, you need to have a plan for where you could put conduit and where you can put panels and things, and that would be part of making the building solar ready under the... So I'm just short, shortening it here and just mentioning that.
Would that in the testimony?
Yes, they had, they had said that, you know, they weren't even meeting the, the new state law, but I think this is pretty explanatory.
Okay. So it's in, it's in the testimony, so basically some language there to clarify that not only will the roof be ready to install solar panels, but the building would be ready in case solar panels were installed.
So I just added, "and roof."
Building, roof and...
Yeah, that would, that would be fine.
What else? Yeah?
That's it for me.
Anybody else? Lou, Rob, Mayor, Curtis, anybody? Entertainer motion. Anybody want to give me a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution with changes we made and the two changes that were at the, three changes that were at the table.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mayor makes a motion. Andrea, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You should do a roll call. Oh, okay. I'll take a roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
And Chairman Carr?
Yes.
Just mayor, did you say three changes that were on the table? I think it was actually more than three. The number of changes that are set forth.
Yeah.
Whatever they are.
Whatever were on the, on the table, and whatever we made.
Good.
Motion, uh, motion passes.
I mean, if you want specifically, I have three. This full design, oh, sorry. This is for the other one. Sorry.
Okay, next on the agenda is resolution PB 20-15 as amended Avalon Bay Communities Inc., Princeton Junction Train Station redevelopment. Jerry, you want to kind of just give a summary of resolution?
Yeah, this was the application, which saw mainly to add a roof, add a six-story to, I think it was the east garage, and there were a number, and there was a substantial signage package as well. The application was approved. The waivers, I think they might have been 23, were granted, as, as was amended preliminary and final major site plan. In terms of the changes that my office sent out today and that Lisa put in the package, you will see there is, there before you, there really minus stuff, adding a parenthesis, parentheses, and is becomes are, and where we had exhibits and applicants' reports, we added and submissions.
Okay. Anybody have any changes, amendments, corrections, or questions?
I had a little clarification on 25, parking, page 10.
What page is that?
Yeah. 10. Maybe it's still 10. If you look down. Five up from the bottom. It's, says, "The applicant, while not agreeing with the board's interpretation, agreed, as a condition of approval, to add altogether 17 EV charging stalls to the east garage." And I just wanted to make sure that said, "In addition to those previously approved." And then, I think there was a little confusion in the last sentence where it says, "These may be installed on the same phases, phase-in schedules that was previously approved." I don't know what was previously approved, but they were going to be installed on the same phase-in schedule as the current state law, which was basically 15%, 5% this year, and then adding 5% over, and another 5% later, so... I don't, I don't know if there was anything previously approved for the other 86 chargers, but we had agreed that what, these would be added, installed on the phase-in schedule as the state law.
Why don't we change that last sentence then to read, these, they shall...
Chargers. See, it wasn't, the, the way this reads is that they were going to be making EV charging, make-ready EV charging stalls, and they were going to install the make-ready, but what you're doing is you're putting in the full number of make-ready, and then you're putting the EV chargers in according to a phase-in schedule. There's a difference. See what I'm saying? So if you, if you change the late, last sentence to that the EV chargers may be installed on the same phase-in schedules per state law, they would, they would be putting in the make-ready for the full amount, but they would be putting them in as full chargers as per the, as per the law.
Bear with me for a second.
Does, does that make sense?
That makes sense to me. Just bear with me. So we'll have the EV chargers, shall be, the last sentence that when I read, the EV chargers shall be installed.
Shall be installed on the same phase-in schedule as per the current state law.
Right.
And, and you're, you're, you're adding the make, you're adding the full, the full number of make-ready right away, and then you're, then they can install it based on that.
Got that, Jerry?
Yep.
Uh, nope, that was just me.
Anybody else have any amendments, changes, clarifications, questions to this, this resolution? Hearing, no, no. Entertainer motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution 2015 with the changes Andrea made and in the changes on our desk.
Second. Okay, motion by Mayor and second by Annis. Please call the roll. Segment Annis.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is application PB 21-10 Carnegie Center West Corman Suites Preliminary Finals Major Site Plan and subdivision of Sixth Amendment to Preliminary A Site Plan, block 7.1, lot 12.06. Property is owned in ROM-1 District, MLUL 72722. This is for a proposed four-story, approximately 360,000 square foot, 270-room corporate suites hotel with parking and other associated site improvements comprising a portion of lot 12.06 in block, in block 7.13 within Carnegie Center West and is known as Building 8.801. Block 7.13, lot 12.06 is proposed to be subdivided, proposed lot 12.061 for the hotel, and proposed lot 12.062 for future development. The applicant also requests an amendment to the previously granted general development plan approval known as Preliminary A to revise the layout for various buildings, parking utilities, grading, stormwater management, landscaping, and other associated improvements. Various, various variances and design waivers are required.
Mr. Jerry, proof of publication and service are in order. The notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Right, thank you. Okay. The applicant has, hi. You have how many witnesses? Nine witnesses? Pretty substantial. Pretty substantial. Seven witnesses. Oh, that'll go much quicker than nine. Got it. So what we like to do is, and we have so many witnesses, we have them all stand up, swear them in together. They can state their name, and then later on, when they testify, we'll qualify them.
Yeah.
That's good. Less people yelling at me.
Okay, if you could, each raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed. If you can, you can go around, state your full name, spell your last name, and start over here.
So, Charlie RiCiciIARDI, I am a council for Boston Properties, representing Boston Properties here in my capacity with the company.
And your last name is spelled again?
Charlie RiCiciIARDI.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Scott Relic, R.E.O., I should get. Investment for 22.
Okay.
Jeffrey Brown, E.R. of the U.N.
Okay.
Brian Bruce, B.R.U.C.P., for architecture.
Is that B.R.I. or B.R.Y.? B.R.I.A.N.?
R.Y.A.N.
Y.A.N., okay.
Bruce Klein, T&amp;M Associates, K.L.B.I.B.
Thank you.
Mike Thomas with T&amp;M Associates, Site Civil Engineer.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mike Thomas with T&amp;M Associates, Site Civil Engineer, last name spelled.
I wasn't that far off our planner.
There he is.
John, wait, wait, wait a second, okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed, please state your full names, spell your last name. Thank you.
That's everybody, right? Seven. Okay, thank you. Who's up first?
Excuse me?
You want to give an overview of the application?
I'd love to, I've covered some of it already, and I thank you for that. My name is Merrill Gonchar, I'm a member of the firm of Souls Commissar Bros., and we are representing the applicant this evening, BXP Carnegie Owner LLC. As you indicated, the property is located in the ROF1, so in district, excuse me, and is part of Carnegie Center West within the general development plan, which is referred to as Preliminary A. Thank you, Council, for acknowledging, we move through the items submitted in support of notice, we appreciate your acknowledging that notice was properly served when submitted. As you indicated, the application, the CFP, we've sort of broken it into three parts. There is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval, some bulk variances and design waivers or exceptions in connection with the proposed four-story, approximately 360,000 square foot, 270-room corporate suites, which is within your definition of hotel under ordinance, and there will be a number of amenities, improvements, site improvements, parking, animal life, which we will describe, and our witnesses. This is located at the building referred to as 801 Carnegie Center, and is designated on your tax map as lot 713, Lot 12.06. We are also seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, seeking to subdivide that lot into two lots, one which will be improved with corporate suites, a building at the other, which for the moment will remain vacant for future development, however. And then finally, as we indicated, an amended amendment to the previously approved general development plan under Preliminary A for Carnegie Center West, to revise the layouts with buildings located there, including 702, 703, 801, 802, 803, 901. And there will be some revisions to layout utilities, stormwater grading, and other improvements on the site, and again, our witnesses will describe how those proposed, the proposed changes vary from what was previously approved. Preliminary A includes properties on your tax map, including Block 7.13, Lot 12.03, 12.05, 12.06, Lot 7.14, Lot 12.04, Lot 7.15, Lots 12.04, 12.05, 12.06, 12.07, 12.09, and 12.10. We have requested a few submission waivers, those were identified in the application that we submitted, and as well as some of the reviews. One of the items that we are requesting is from the preliminary or final subdivision checklist, item 23, which requires LOI to be submitted, we're actually asking that that simply be deferred, application has been made. From the final flat subdivision checklist, there are a few items being requested, and those are the items that will be submitted later during compliance or subsequent, if approval is granted, because those are items that because we are seeking preliminary and final together, we don't have some of the items that would otherwise be submitted with final. From the preliminary site plan checklist, again, same LOI that is in process at the current time, and with regard to the final site plan checklist, again, some items that will be submitted if the approval is granted as we move through compliance. With regard to variances, we are seeking three. One, we have technically noticed for, and this relates to the impervious coverage for preliminary A, the general development plan, and approval was previously, relief was previously granted to permit coverage at 54.93%, where 50% is permitted. While we still exceed the 50% with the changes we're proposing through the amendment to the GDP, the coverage will go down to 52.34%. We are also seeking variance from section.
Just if I can, if I can interrupt for a second on that, given what Merrill just said, variance is not necessary for impervious cover.
We have identified it because it still exceeds 50%, but because we're reducing the coverage, we are reducing the deviation previously, and we wanted to pull that out.
Is that for 801, is that for the whole property, is, what, what was that actually for?
As, as our witness will testify, the coverage number relates to the GDP, the entire preliminary.
Thank you.
That's how it's done. The other variances, Section 200-209, A8, E2A, and 209, A8-2, these relate to the required setback for Route 1 and from 200-210, E1. Also, these two, by the way, are with regard to the building, so these are with regard to the site plan for 801. We are also requesting a variance for front yard setback. And then there are a number of design waivers. One from Section 200-27, D2, where four loading spaces are required, and we propose to provide three. One from Section 200-28.2B, where we are proposing 444 parking spaces, which exceeds the 285 parking spaces calculated under your ordinance. Again, that relates to the building 801 and the site plan. We are also seeking relief from Section 229, oh, I should say, from the same section, we're also seeking relief with regard to preliminary A. In that regard, the number calculated under your ordinance is 4,129, and the number being proposed for preliminary A is 4,441. We're also asking for a waiver from Section 200-29 and 3 to permit a run of 21 parking spaces in one of the roads, where a maximum of 20 such spaces are permitted. From Section 200-31, A3, to permit lighting intensity in certain locations at the property line to achieve the 1.0 load gap limitation. From Section 200-31, A4, to permit an average nomination level of 1.2-foot candles, where an average of 0.6-foot candles is required in certain areas. Section 200-32, V3A. I'm not going to go through the, the remaining items are from the sign variance, the sign ordinance provisions, and we will have someone address them rather than going through. There are a number of requests with regard to signage. There is a waiver with regard to the number of trees, shade trees being planted in the parking area under Section 200-91, E7C, to permit 29 trees in the parking area, where 89 trees would be required based on the total number of parking spaces provided. And another waiver from 200-91, A4, simple striping in the parking garage portion of the parking, rather than the hairpin parking striping, which is being provided in the exterior parking. And then, a waiver from Section 200-100.1 to permit, I'm not even going to say this right, above-grade bioinfiltration-based, linear bioinfiltration basins where same are not permitted. And finally, we have requested a variance from Section 35, authorized pursuant to Section 36 of the Municipal Land use Law, to permit approval of the requested subdivision and development on lots which are adjacent to a street but do not have direct access to the public street. We have received numerous review letters, and I will not go through all of those, I assume those will be referenced or referred to by your consultants as we go through them. As we indicated, we have a representative of the applicant, we have two representatives from the contract purchaser-operator of corporate suites, Corman Communities. We have our Michael Thomas from T&amp;M Associates, our engineer, Ryan Bruce from Bernard, Bernarden, the applicant's architect, Bruce Klein of T&amp;M Associates, who is our traffic engineer, and John McDonough of John McDonough Associates, who is our professional. We would propose to start with a representative from the applicant, and then we'd like to introduce you to the community that we hope to become a part of the Westminster Community, the Corman Communities, and then we will go on to our engineer to address, for starters, the preliminary A modifications as well as the subdivision. That's the board has other preferences for how we proceed. We'd like to proceed in that manner.
Yes, absolutely, yes, present your first witness.
Great, want to just give your name again and your position with the company, to, or you've been sworn.
Of course, can you all hear me all right? So Gregory Richardi, R.I.C.C.I.A.R.D.I., I am the CFP Council, but here on behalf of the company generally.
Give us a brief history of the project to put the applications in the context for.
So I guess start as a little bit of a Debbie Downer.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone for us out, thanks?
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll start a little bit as a, a little bit of a Debbie Downer, and then, and then build this back up again in terms of what a tremendous opportunity this particular project with, with Corman is for BXP. You know, the headwinds for commercial office right now are pretty strong. Between work from home and hybrid environments, supply chain issues, and the general cost of construction, getting commercial office real estate deals done in this market is, is a challenge. But out of that challenge, BXP looks for opportunities to do things a little bit differently, and, and even, you know, not knowing, you know, how things were going to turn out, getting this opportunity to, to work with Corman to introduce this corporate suites concept to Carnegie Center West, which we perceive will be a tremendous amenity for our clients, for our, for our tenants and users at BXP. It creates an opportunity for greater mixed-use integration, so that we're not entirely office on Carnegie Center West. We now have this wonderful corporate suites use being proposed that kind of creates a little bit of a transitional element between our office properties and the canal point properties that are adjacent to us, residential. And it's also complementary with the other uses that are further south of us, which include more traditional hotels and the Market Fair Mall. So really creating this, this new opportunity for different use within our ranks at Carnegie Center West and Carnegie Center generally. When I say this is an amenity for our tenants, and why we're so excited that Corman is interested in doing this development is, we have almost 500,000 square feet of international tenants at Carnegie Center. There's nothing like this product in our region in terms of its quality and its service to a Class A tenant. We envision, you know, our, you know, CEOs from our international companies that are from Japan, Korea, different pharmaceutical companies, will stay here for, for months on end when they come. You know, a classic example, we had one of our executives recently come through, they were getting FDA approval for a drug, and they needed to be here for six months. And, you know, having an amenity like this for them just makes our office that much more attractive. So we do perceive that this use will help us lease and develop more properties for, for the purpose of here.
Can you just bring the board up to date on some of the recent upgrades or improvements generally?
Sure, we're going to, we're going to talk about this kind of from a, from a big global, all the way down to, to the preliminary A in Corman specifically, and I'll do this efficiently. Most recently, we were before this board for solar applications for four buildings on campus. Those projects went very well, and we're very excited about them. It's part of Boston Properties as a, as a national company's portfolio to move toward a carbon neutrality by 2025. These four solar installations that we've done in addition to the one that was already there at NRG are the four largest in our company, and are a significant driver toward that, that carbon neutral role in 2025. We have installed electric vehicle charging stations at four of our properties. This predates the passage of the law, and since most of our properties can be grandfathered in, as they're existing, we're already on tap to put additional charging infrastructure in four more buildings in 2023 that we expect to go online. So BXP has a, you know, very, very strong commitment to sustainability, both, you know, across the country and specifically here in West Windsor. A lot of our buildings can be a little dated, and so recently, some of them were built in the 1980s. We've begun some modernization, so Building 510 is now getting a brand-new curtain wall to bring that building, that stripped the whole front facade off and put a brand-new glass to really punch up, up that building, and you've done lobby renovations in basically every single one of our buildings across Carnegie Center, including substantial changes in 214 and 210 in the last two years. This is just to provide you a little bit of a sense of what we've been looking for, for the future, and bringing Carnegie Center forward, and showing a commitment to sustained growth and development here at West Windsor. And some of the other things that we're excited about are trying to look at new opportunities again, headwinds of office to bring life sciences developments, which we think is really the future of growth here, as well as increasing our charitable presence. We hosted four, five Ks in the Westminster community in the last year. We look forward to doing more of those car shows. Now, how does that all relate to what we're presenting to you tonight for the preliminary A, right? Which is to say that even though the prior approval was here in 2014 on the prior preliminary A, some of the changes that we're going to explain to you tonight and walk you through are necessitated by a lot of these things that we're striving for in terms of changing our approach to, to the long-term development of Boston Properties. So in working with township professionals across four TRC meetings, and taking a lot of their comments to heart, and looking at the initiatives that were implemented most early on for Carnegie Center West, there were three primary things that we wanted to look at, which were, one, that buildings be highly visible to display company name, brand, and values, right? So from our client's perspective, that's the most, that's, that's the most important one. We appreciate it, may not be the most important driver for the township, that's why we balance some of the other elements. But for us, moving the buildings closer to, one, for enhanced visibility, and, you know, in these markets, trying to get our tenants exactly what they want in terms of that visibility is critical. The second criteria that we dug deep down into working with professionals was the sense of belonging to a community while maintaining individuality, right? So, you know, part of. And so, you know, part of that was talking about some of those charitable initiatives, things that we're doing. When all of the infrastructure ultimately gets in place, Carnegie Center West, pursuant to this preliminary A. There'd be opportunities to do those types of five Ks on the west side like we do them on the east side. There'd be opportunities to utilize some of the walking paths that Mike Thomas is going to give you a deep dive in detail in terms of the plan itself. To, you know, have like a linear farmer's market or something along that path, similar like we do in the two hundred series. The main driver behind the change in the preliminary A, you can see, is Foreman is literally the center of Carnegie Center West. It's a critical part of creative connective tissue. By putting that building right in the middle and spine that goes up on the east-west. Matter really created this this center focal point for Carnegie Center West and our new proposed buildings spread out from there. So Mike, if you don't mind, could you put up those preliminary A, so as I'm describing some of this stuff, it'll help to have a visual, I guess, to mark this one, maybe once.
Purpose of the note, we will provide your details.
So it's. Am I allowed to go mobile with this?
Absolutely.
All right. And so let's, let's do that real quick just to help, help frame ourselves out a little bit. The landscape renter plan for the preliminary A. So Mike is going to walk you through the the granular detail of all this. So I just want to do is give you a little bit of a sense of how we ended up here. And you'll also see in Mike's testimony what this looked like in twenty fourteen, for those that don't remember. But but the biggest change here that you're looking at again is because Foreman did not exist under that preliminary plan. It's now been introduced, like I said, it's the heart of Carnegie Center West. You're working north to south, seven oh one is the existing building for Princeton University. Flanked down here by eight oh four, which is NRG, right? So we're talking about the heart of this Carnegie Center West development, which is this project. And the prior one had just rectangles. There were, you know, five rectangular buildings, long floor plates, and we've learned now that that is not what our client wants. Our client wants smaller plates, more window line, better natural light. And so that's why you get these modular buildings which can easily support both multi-tenant and single-tenant constructs. And create these more unique architectural environments, far more consistent with what we have in Carnegie Center East. To create that further sense of community in terms of those the straight, you know, rectangular buildings built spec for Princeton University. This is about the only one. All the other ones, if you've been around Carnegie Center, are triangular shaped, are trapezoidal shaped. You know, you have some of these dimensions that exist for NRG mirrored over here with the new design for nine oh one, moving away from again these rectangular shapes. This is nine oh two built-in property. This is Princeton University. So by creating a more consistent design with the rest of Carnegie Center to help promote that sense of community. Also in that sense of community, Mike's going to testify with respect to the walking path that's been created here behind the berm that screens off Route One. And that was an important thing that we had discussed with the township professionals, including the landscape architect and engineer. As well as creating additional opportunities for connectivity, both this spine will take you all the way to Market Fair. And then we're also doing some additional sidewalk along the nine oh one property ahead of it ever being developed. To create the ability to to connect over here. And then some additional linkages that will connect to the Canal Point property on York Bridge. Which is something that the township professionals felt strongly about.
I, I was walking there today and I noticed there is no sidewalk on the south side, on your side there. So if you put that building in before you build everything else, are you going to be putting that sidewalk that goes towards Carnegie Center in? Towards NRG and everything like that before?
So what we're, what we're proposing and Mike will provide some more affirmative testimony on this in the short term. Is creating this linkage through this circle up here. And we will be putting the sidewalk in here where there's existing sidewalk here, so you can get to Market Fair that way. As well as this sidewalk with the connection and the crosswalk at York Bridge. So that's kind of what we call like the phase one part that's going to be built as part of Foreman's development. And then this part of the linkage from right here, this piece, right, would go online with building eight oh two, eight oh three.
So there would be a sidewalk on the south.
So you'd have, you'd have linkage from here up here and out this way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I just want to make sure that I hit all my points. One other change that you're going to hear Mike provide testimony about is. Under the prior preliminary A that was approved, there was a large parking deck here. Again, we talked about our commitment to solar, building structured parking is incredibly expensive. And it's something that while our customers would like covered parking, we're finding that there is a far greater opportunity to provide that. And provide an environmental sustainable initiative by doing canopies, which is what we've done. Again, at seven oh one, we have them at eight oh four, we have them at three other properties at Carnegie Center East. And so what we would propose is, while not committing necessarily to doing it right now, because it would depend when those developments come online, what the market looks like for those things. Having surface parking here creates a better opportunity for us to be able to do that type of solar development. And again, it's just, it's prohibitively expensive to do that that type of structured parking. Now, with that said, there is structured parking as part of the Foreman development that the Foreman team will develop. So if you can imagine, we swapped out essentially a big deck here that would have been an eyesore for the folks here at Canal Point. We put underground structured parking here with Foreman, so you still have a structured parking element. And we've created these fields of parking to support the need for these office developments. Can never have enough parking for office, it's important. But at the same time, creating an opportunity based on Boston Properties' commitment to sustainability to do solar on those properties in the future. As well as the Foreman Building, you'll hear a testimony from from Jeff on this, will be made ready to do solar in the future should they decide to do so. So. I think that's, that's just me. So just talking, we were talking about the parking. One of the waivers that you heard us describe is we are proposing additional parking that is required by. And what we're seeing is very much across our campus, people are still coming by car, they're still commuting, they're not using S transit to get here. Carnegie Center is a destination for office users, so we have people traveling from a long distance to work here. But with that said. They're not, even with the work from home and hybrid models, they're not coming on sporadic dates. Everybody's in the pool on one day. So we'll have full lots on a Wednesday and then under the way things are today, quiet lots on a Monday. So we need all of that parking to facilitate not just the day-to-day office use, which may be sporadic. But that everybody in the pool and pulling from other locations if they have other offices, because they really are creating these synergies and events. Where everybody in that company is coming on one day. So we're really seeing this need and this this desire to have that additional parking. Which also may in the future translate, we're not seeking this from this board at this time, coming back to the board to revisit some of the densities along these buildings. Which would also require some additional parking. All of the preliminary A, as Mike will describe to you, is on an FAR basis. And in order to accommodate this unique use, we had to rob Peter to pay Paul. So we took some of the FAR from our office buildings in order to facilitate this exciting opportunity for for a new use for Carnegie Center West. If I have any questions about that? Then I'm going to turn it over.
We can hear you, it's, it's fine. Who's up next?
We're million and call Scott Relic from Foreman Communities. Can we just, just for the record, any document that's previously been submitted, we are not going to mark and those will all become part of the record by virtue of their submission?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good. Okay, Scott, can you just provide the board with your, your name again and your position with the company? And tell us that for me.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I am Scott Relic.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Sorry. Closer to the mic.
Speak louder, louder.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Scott Relic, R E L I C K. I serve as head of investments for Foreman Communities. As a brief history, Foreman Communities is a hundred-year-old, fifth-generation, family-owned business. Based just outside of Philadelphia in Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania. Company currently owns and operates thirty-four properties across eight states, including four locations in New Jersey. Corporate suite operations represent approximately sixty-five percent of our operations. Operated under the A V E or AD brand. Foreman Family has been successfully operating its corporate suites business model for over fifty-five years of its history. And our properties essentially seek to provide alternative living accommodations to traditional hotels and apartments. From a client standpoint, they typically fall into two categories. The first of and largest of which is the business traveler. This client is typically an extent, on an extended assignment, experiencing a relocation. Or in a specific location for training, internship, or consulting assignments. Second client profile is comprised of individuals who are typically in some form of transition, including temporary displacement from fires or floods. For home improvements as well as downsizers and unfortunately individuals experiencing some dislocation associated with marital circumstances. We have been focused on entering the Princeton market for a number of years. We're very fortunate to be able to be introduced to Boston Properties to discuss the subject project. We were drawn to Carnegie Center specifically because of the high concentration of high-quality office tenants. Close proximity to multiple corporations is very complimentary to our business model. As a final note, the subject property is designed to provide best-in-class service and accommodations. With the goal of potentially becoming a flagship property for the company.
Just to give the words to idea, and mitigate if there were other locations in New Jersey, can you just identify where some of the, your other corporate suites are currently located?
Sure, so.
Scott, I would like to add to Merrill's comment, could you tell us the number of units at each location?
I'm sorry, units?
The number of, number of, of suites, suites at each location, if you, if you know it, if you know it.
For Princeton?
No, no, we know that one. The other ones you're about to describe.
For the other four properties.
Yeah, that, that gives us the bigger picture of sure, in New Jersey.
Sure, so in New Jersey, Forum Park, two hundred and fifty-six units. Clifton, New Jersey, two hundred and fifty-eight units. Union, New Jersey, two hundred and twenty-seven units. Somerset, New Jersey, three hundred units, so a little bit over a thousand units. Subject property would add an additional two hundred and seventy.
And you operate all of them, right? It's not a franchise?
Correct. Yep, we own and operate all, yes.
So Scott, I'll ask this question now that you've shared that. How, for a location like this, how do you determine, what is the criteria to determine the quantity of units at a location? What factors are involved?
Sure, so generally speaking, we look for new, new locations with, that have a high concentration. Of industries that are currently in the portfolio. So we will follow clients to where they have needs. An example would be we've got a forty-year relationship with Johnson and Johnson. So where they have needs, we are naturally drawn to those types of locations. With respect to Carnegie Center specifically, you know, it's really industry-driven. So, you know, medical, technology, financial services, pharmaceutical. Those are, those are key industries and we've got a high concentration of users within those industries. So high level, that's, that's really the starting point. I'll say to you, some of the brain damage as relates to the details our marketing folks go through to, you know, drill down on the amount of units. But generally speaking, those are the, those are the macro elements we look at. And then, you know, the secondary items are job growth, you know, concentration of employment growth in the market as well.
And has with, because of the circumstances in our country the last few years related to the pandemic. How has that, the changing paradigm of work, the work environment affect how you decide? How many units you would need at a proposed location?
So it hasn't really affected the number of units. It has changed the profile of the user slightly, so.
Play that out.
Just from the standpoint of the mix between what I'll call our traditional corporate user and our individual user. So what we have found is where that mix caused prior to two thousand twenty and and the onset of COVID was probably. You know, seventy-five percent in favor of, you know, corporate users and with the balance twenty-five percent being individuals in some type of transition. Today, that mix is probably closer to sixty-five percent in favor of, you know, corporate users, thirty-five percent individual users. We're not sure if that as, as the workforce, you know, returns to office. We're not sure if that may migrate back a little bit closer to seventy-five percent, but that's has been, you know, the impact.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may, as part of the metrics and information we shared with Foreman as part of the diligence that continued throughout the pandemic. Are you centers?
I'm sorry to interrupt you for a second.
This needs to be Mike. Or you can stand at this one right here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And maybe restart your thoughts so it can get recorded.
Of course, yeah, so I was just going to say to help.
Identify yourself to the recording.
Gregory Ricciardi, Boston Properties Council, I testified earlier with respect to kind of the synergies between Boston Properties and the Foreman Project. And so as part of the diligence and materials that we had shared with Foreman throughout the transactional process, including through the pandemic. While we're struggling to bring new, say, build-to-suit or new office developments online. Our vacancy has not increased substantially across the campus. So we still have what I would consider normal attrition with respect to office tenants that would otherwise be expiring and some of the ones that were maybe smaller. We've actually seen some folks expand to change their footprint to allow for more coworking space and things like that. Or to offer opportunities where they have more offices so that things like the pandemic should have happened again, they're more prepared. And so from, you know, the opportunity for Foreman to come to Carnegie Center. We're still going strong in terms of our office usage in terms of the number of tenants and there hasn't been a change in vacancy. So that's a dimension.
Of the, say, thirty-five percent of the individual customer. How long would the average person or family stay?
Sorry, could you repeat?
I'm saying, how long, how long would the individual family stay on an average in in the, these apartments?
Sure, so just to make sure, average length of stay, is that your question? Yes, so.
I think for those, I think it's for the families in transition, is that right? Right, you said there was a sixty-five percent corporate, there was a thirty-five percent which are families or people in transition. So for the people in transition, I'm just breaking it out, are we talking six months, three months, two years? Are we talking six months, three months, two years? What would be the average stay for them?
Right. So our typical minimum stay is 30 days and maximum stay is 12 months term.
How many months? I'm sorry.
Sorry?
12?
12.
12. So people wouldn't stay more than a year or?
People can stay.
Oh, they can stay as long as they want. Okay.
People can stay longer if they choose, you know, the current, you know, average and I'll defer to my colleague Jeff Brown, you know, on this for specifics, but is approximately seven months?
Is that overall to different types or is that just the, is that a general number for both types?
It's specific to the furnace component. So overall weighted average, again, I'm using approximate here, is probably between 10 and 11 months.
Just a follow-up question. Do you find that families in transition that are staying for 11 months, 10 months, are they establishing residencies there and go to the local schools?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that one more time?
Do you find a family in transition that has two children because their mansion's being renovated and they want to stay at the suites, do you find them establishing residency and then going to the local schools?
I can answer the question generally. Typically, just because of the setup of the building, it's limited to studios, one- and two-bedroom units. We don't have, you know, a high percentage of school-aged children. If, you know, folks move in and establish residency during a school year, I guess certainly they could, you know, attend.
Okay. You've got about half of your units here are two-bedroom units and half of those are two-bedroom with a den, which is pretty much the size of a lot of the apartments in our town. So it would seem to me there would be a number of potential students that we would see from this?
I can take that. My name is Jeff Brown with Corman Communities. Sorry. Thanks. Jeff Brown with Corman Communities. We find that a lot of the.
What's your role there?
I'm on the investment team with Scott Relick.
Thank you.
We find that a lot of the residents or the clients that are.
Were you sworn in? I'm sorry.
I was. We find that a lot of the clients are existing members of the community. They're moving in when their home is being renovated, as you mentioned. They may or may not establish residency in the building. The suites here are, like you said, approximately 50% two-bedrooms. We find very few school-aged children across the portfolio that Scott mentioned. We actually have just 93 children across over 3,200 suites in the portfolio, which equates to 7.72 children among 270 suites proposed in West Windsor Township.
So you said on average, we'd be looking at seven children?
7.72 is our current average as of this week.
And some of those could possibly be relocated from an existing home inside the township. So, you know, from outside, it could be even less. Okay. Thank you.
Greg made a good, a good comment. We actually, that's all children between the ages of newborn and 18 years old. So we don't have data specifically on how many are attending the public schools versus private schools versus those that are less than kindergarten age.
Okay. Thank you. Any other testimony?
That would be the direct subject unless the board has other questions that we need to call on Scott for more information. But that would be our direct.
Hey, Mike. I've got a question. Yeah, go ahead, Rob. For those who aren't familiar with your brand, some of us may not be. Who are your direct competitors in this market and are they already here?
Rob, speak into the mic, please.
Are they already here? Are they planning on coming, to your knowledge?
I don't mind how you do this. You look at this stuff. Thank you.
So we do have, you know, competitors who, you know, operate, you know, corporate suites, you know, furnished apartment combination. I would say the hotels compete somewhat, but really because of our length of stay, you know, they're not a primary competitor. You know, Avalon does some, you know, furnished apartments, you know, what we refer to as third-party providers, you know, Suite America, Oakwood, those types of folks who, you know, would operate, would lease apartments in an existing apartment building and then lease them out to their clients. Those are, you know, potential competitors as well. What we have found in other markets and we fully anticipate Princeton would be similar is that nobody's really delivering the level of service and the quality of product that we are and that's why we are as excited about, you know, Princeton. So it's not to say that we don't have competition, but it's.
That's your special sauce, right? And you're very different from what's existing. Some have been retrofit to create the experience, but may not be the same level of experiences.
And maybe the best way to describe it is we're trying to deliver a four-star product in an industry that's really been kind of stuck in a two-star type, you know, quality.
All right, thank you.
When we get to the, through the preliminary A, we'll call Jeff back up. He'll provide some of the amenities and some of the things that will make this unique, this particular product at this location. So that's not all we'll give you, but that's just that someone else testimonies prepared to be that.
Just as a reference, how much would a two-bedroom unit per month cost approximately? Let's say in Somerset, if I want to rent tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll defer to my colleague Jeff on that.
There's a little bit of, sorry, Jeff Brown with Corman Communities. There's some seasonality to that, but today, a two-bedroom suite in Somerset might cost somewhere in the $6,000 a month range.
What month?
Per month.
Is that what, is that furnished?
That's for 30 days.
Yeah, so that's much more than apartments, yeah.
That's correct.
Not that much more. Are these all furnished or?
There's a combination of furnished and unfurnished suites at those properties.
Okay. Okay, next witness, please.
Okay. We'd like to call Michael Thomas from T N M. We'll start by discussing the amendments to the preliminary A and the subdivision.
You qualify, I'm correct.
Yes.
You want to grab the mic?
Can you just provide the board with the benefit of your education, by whom you're employed, your education, and any licenses that you hold in the state of New Jersey?
Again, my name is Michael Thomas. I work for T N M Associates, Site Civil Engineer for the project. I have about 18 years of experience in land development engineering, stormwater management, water resources engineering and the like. I graduated Penn State University in civil engineering and I have a master's degree also in civil engineering. And my general experience is I've provided testimony across the state, including many times in West Windsor Township. So happy to be back here.
Is your license current?
Yes, in the state of New Jersey, yes. And also in several other states.
Anybody? So qualified.
Thank you for accepting him as an expert in the field of engineering. Do you want to mark anything else or you can do it as you go?
So for right now, the only other boards that I have brought up here have already been submitted to the board. So it's the previously approved preliminary A from 2015. And then also the plan set for the preliminary A, just in case we need it.
Those are part of the package that was submitted to the board currently.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to just do a few housekeeping items, just for your awareness, just so you know where we are with the process. We had several land use applications we're making in addition to West Windsor Township. Those include the NJ D P, NJ DOT, Mercer County Soil Conservation District, Mercer County Soil Conservation District, Mercer County Planning Board, Delaware River and Canal Commission. We also have a permit application we need to make for treatment works approval from NJ D P and then also New Jersey American Water and it sort of goes on and on with the other utilities. Just to give a quick status update, the two most, I'll call it, time-critical permits that we're really focusing our attention on right now are the D P and D O T permits. We have heard back from both of them on the reviews and submissions that we made back in March of this year. Still waiting to hear back some stormwater technical comments from D P, but we have received some wetlands-related comments from them. And then on the D O T side, we're still waiting to hear back from their technical comments, but we are in contact with them. We're going to be making and filing applications with the Soil Conservation District and Planning Board as well as the D R C C this week and early next week. And then shortly thereafter, the Treatment Works application and New Jersey American Water applications. Some of the projects that Greg had mentioned a little bit earlier, there's a few more at Carnegie Center that we've done recently that are relative to this particular project. Can't see it on here so well, but on the south side of this exhibit, which is being shown, Mark, is A1, is Carnegie Center East. Carnegie Center Drive over the last few years has experienced a road diet, very similar to Canal Point Boulevard. So they're very, very similar type of design, if you will, for those who are familiar with that. And those who are not familiar with a road diet is essentially where you have two bicycle lanes on the two outside. They take essentially a four-lane highway produced out of two lanes and then there's a turning lane. Those same types of principles we apply for our through driveway that we're proposing for preliminary A, also for the Corman Building. In addition to that, Carnegie Center has undergone a, I'll call it a sign, sign package update, if you will, rebranding, if you will, that happened a few years ago. And as part of that rebranding exercise, we prepared and filed an administratively complete application with the township. It was approved administratively with the review from the traffic engineer at the time, Jim Pacanaro from Aurora. And that package was clear across all of Carnegie Center. So that applied to both the east side and the west side as well. And pretty much what it is, is what we did was we kept the signs that were currently out there today exactly the same size. And all we did was pretty much replace them in kind with the new rebranding that Watson Properties had intended. So many of the waivers that we were requesting, discussing a little bit earlier for the 801 portion of this project and for the future buildings that come online, they're because of that sign package and those specific, I'll call it, monolithic type of signs that are being proposed. So I'm just going to give just a quick rundown about preliminary A. I know Greg covered quite a bit, was up here discussing. I wanted to hit on some of the highlights and things that perhaps he didn't discuss. For those who are not so familiar with Carnegie Center, again, at least on this exhibit, let's just pretend that north is to the right of the page. So on the right side, we had the Matt Calley property, it was just to the north of building 701. To the south of preliminary A, and again, preliminary A extends all the way to the left of the page, which includes two existing hotels and a couple restaurants. We have Market Fair, which I'm sure everyone's familiar with. And then to the, I'll call it, east of Carnegie Center, we have obviously Route 1 and Carnegie Center East and the other buildings that are associated with that. And then to the west side, we have Canal Point Boulevard along with Canal Point Associates and the condo associations that are there. And then just further beyond that is the D N R. So just to give everybody a point of reference of where we are in the world. Carnegie Center or this preliminary A is broken down into three separate phases. The ones that you can see furthest to the left on the exhibit here or to the south are the two existing hotels and restaurants. Just to the north of that is called Phase B. Phase B has a property that's currently owned by Fulton Realty, which is formerly known as, I'll call it, the building 902. Building 901 was previously approved many, many years ago. And it was actually, had received an amended approval as well. But Boston Properties is taking a fresh take at this now with the current market conditions and all the rest of this. It's slated as a, as a, call it, an updated office building. And it has a level of symmetry that's more similar to existing building 804, which many people know as the N R G building, which is part of the Carnegie Center. As we're heading more northbound here, obviously, we had discussed the two end pieces, which is building 804, building 701. 701 is currently occupied by Princeton University and building 804 by N R G. And then obviously, Corman, as Greg had mentioned, is right smack in the middle of it. It's sort of the focal point, the center of where we did our latest design and how we built the design or the revised design that we created. The other buildings, we tried to create a level of symmetry with building 802, 803, building 702. Again, the visibility from Route 1, where you could see it in either direction, whether you're going southbound or northbound along Route 1. Building 703, which is just behind building 702, is slightly prep back behind. It's going to have a little bit less visibility than the Corman Building and building 702. We did our best, though, to create that interconnectivity between buildings, though, and do something that just made sense, right, you know, with the constraints that we have. Greg had also mentioned about the removal of a parking deck that was, that we had proposed under the 2015 version of the preliminary A. That existing parking deck really drove, I'll call it, the number of parking spaces up higher in preliminary A. We actually have a less, lower number of parking spaces that we're proposing now and a smaller maximum improvement coverage or impervious coverage, if you will, that is on the site. We made a lot of efforts here to bring this up a bit. There were a few things that were unavoidable. So for instance, Greg had mentioned in his testimony that, that sort of along Route 1, we have this accessway or this connectivity path, if you will, that runs along in a north-south direction. That was brought in from a variety of different reasons, one of them being providing emergency access to the future buildings, including building 801, which is the Corman Building, and also bicycle connectivity, pedestrian connectivity and the like. The Corman Building is doing something similar in nature to what was done with building 804. And what do I mean by that? There's a berm that is being designed along the Corman Building. We're expecting building 802, 803 and 702 to have a similar type of berm approximately 10 foot tall in height. Building 804 had a similar design to it as well when it was proposed. And we're proposing obviously landscaping throughout there. So you could see that on the exhibit that was handed out to everybody. Again, the two main, I'll call it zoning components to preliminary A or focal points, if you will, are the F A R and the M I C, which is the maximum improvement coverage. The F A R is the floor area ratio. Point 3 is the requirement. We, because the Corman Building itself is so big and massive, you know, we're talking 360,000 square feet gross floor area, we sort of proportionally reduce down the office building sizes for the other buildings, which included 802, 803, 702, and 703. So what's kind of unique about the Corman Building, because this is like a mixed-use development now compared to sort of what it was back in 2015, is that the size and the mass of the Corman Building actually has a lower parking requirement. And because of that, there is less parking that's really being proposed or associated with the Corman Building. So it's a bigger building, less surface parking, at least we're proposing. The office buildings are smaller buildings, you know, square footage-wise, more surface parking, more of a need for the parking. So that's kind of the rationale of why things look the way they do. Now, with all this parking that we have on there, we're fully cognizant of the impact it's having on the environment and the like. For those, everybody on the board, I'm sure it's very much where the NJ D P stormwater management requirements. We've done great lengths on this project for the Corman Building and we will, obviously, for the future buildings that come online, to incorporate pervious pavement on the site, which is something that the township had in their ordinance for a long time anyway. So it sort of, it sort of fits the bill quite well for this type of development. This is a very different approach than we took back in 2015 with large stormwater management. We were still looking at the regional basins that were part of the 2015 plan. That can be seen, obviously, with the existing wet pond in building 804. And then on the flip side of building 701, there's also an existing wet pond. There are larger regional basins. You're really not allowed to do it anymore, at least in the stormwater management rules. So we're treating stormwater at its source and this is at the parking lot locations. There's really going to be, originally, there was a plan to put a, call it, a larger regional basin closer towards the intersection of Canal Point Boulevard and York Bridge Drive. And I'm pointing to it right on the map right now, so everybody can see what I'm saying. It's pretty much directly across where the Corman Building is going. For this project, we're not proposing any new improvements to that existing basin. So that's, that's more or less going to remain the way it is. As a side note.
Are you referring to the basin that's there now with the drain in it? The, you saying you're going to leave that basin?
Correct. It's, it's going to remain unchanged as part of the Corman project. So just one quick note on that basin though, it was cleaned out a few years ago. So there was a lot of existing vegetation in there that needed to be removed. Trees had fallen down. There's a lot of scrub shrub within it. It was actually preventing water from flowing to its destination, which eventually is, is the ENR now. So we had gone through a permitting process with DEP to clean that up, picks up the out of control structure. And it's a much better maintain now. If anybody's driven along Canal Point Boulevard, you'll be able to see that. So those are most of the main changes. I'll talk a little bit about building 901 again, that was over there. It's a little bit different design than, than what was done in 2015. It was more of a rectangular building. It looked, building 901 used to look pretty symmetrical to building 902. That's how it was originally designed and parking was designed around it. We're now pushing that building a little closer towards Route One and it has a level of symmetry, as I mentioned earlier. That's, that's more similar to building 804, just put it that way. Access to the site is more or less remaining unchanged. One of the main differences from the prior preliminary A to the current preliminary A was the access off of Route One. So Route One, we originally had on the last preliminary A, the, the access coming off in a slightly different location. It was further south than where we're proposing it right now. Why we decided to do that? Well, the, the original access that was approved for preliminary A coming off of Route One was actually built many years ago, about 20 years ago or so. They constructed the curving for it, you know, the, the curb cuts, if you will. And it's coming off of Route One. That's part of an original NJDOT access permit, which we're trying to preserve as part of this application. So we came up with our design here. That was one of the major factors in our design was making sure we were reusing that existing access that was coming off of, off of Route One. And, you know, doing some slight improvements to it, if you will. But the four, I'll call it more critical sub-access points off of Canal Point Boulevard are still there. We're still proposing those. We haven't changed that. That's been part of preliminary A as far as I can remember, even going back to, to the, to the 1980s. Building 804 still has access from the, I'll call it the, the jug handle that's coming off of Route One. And, and, and leads, there's, there's a driveway access that gets onto building 804. So those are the major key access points around, around preliminary A. One of the things that we are proposing on this, on this project is sort of like safety net, as you will, is a banked parking, if you will. So building 801, and I'll get into that in a little bit, a little bit later. We are proposing a couple above grade bio retention basins, which are on the west side of the building. In that same spot on preliminary A, we're showing a banked park or a potential future banked park. Many conversations with Boston Properties and making sure that they can sufficiently market their products, you know, to, to, to future potential tenants. They wanted to reserve the right to have those additional 43 spaces of banked parking. Now, if they were to go down that road and never build those 43 spaces, we would have to come up with another updated stormwater management solution that would replace the bio infiltration basins that we're proposing right now. So, but it's, it's 43 spaces is what we had there. Again, it's the intent is, is generally a safety net, you know, just in case kind of a thing. With regard to utilities for preliminary A, mostly everything for the remaining buildings are to come off Route One. And what do I mean by that? Gas, the water, the electric telecom, almost all of it's going to come off Route One. There will be a few connections coming off of Canal Point Boulevard for the water connection to create a loop. And then in addition to that, the sanitary sewer is going to be coming off of Canal Point Boulevard and also through an existing stub that we purposefully added in when we designed building 804. And building 804 again is the NRG building. So we had created that stub in there for the future connections that were, that were going to come in. So we talked about stormwater emergency access. Again, that was a big topic when we met with Mr. Lynch during, during the four TRC meetings that we had, we wanted to make sure we were providing access around the bermers of the building. So that has become now like a focal point of this design, one of the focal points. So again, we're providing that access off of Route One from there.
I couldn't find some of the stormwater calculations on any of these drawings, like the outgoing points and stuff like that, what they are now, what they will be.
So your question was stormwater calculations?
Yeah, I, I usually like on the front page, there'll be something like, you know, point one, point two, point three. Here's what it is. Here's what legally it needs to be if I'm developing. Here's, here's what it's going to be based after I develop it. You know, I just couldn't find those numbers here.
So preliminary, so for building 801, we have a full, full stormwater management report that was submitted in, you know, in performance with the NJDP stormwater management requirements and green infrastructure requirements. For, for preliminary A, we, there is no, there is no updated submission, if you will, for stormwater management. Major thing that we were focusing on and what we've done in the past, when we made preliminary A submissions, was making sure that we had sufficient areas for pervious pavement. That meant both the DEP requirements for storage as well as the township requirements, because the town also has pervious pavement percentage requirements for developments like this.
Yeah, I'm talking about the bottom line number. Do you, right now we're talking preliminary for this whole area here. I would assume if you came back with a final plan, those numbers would be available, calculated.
Sure.
And did, have you done, done them for 801? Cause I know there was a big thick discussion on, you know, everything, but I was just looking for some summary numbers.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the things that Mr. Guzik had asked when we were doing the TRC process was to prepare a map, which would summarize for building 801, all of the BMPs that we were proposing. So the BMPs are like the basins that we're proposing for 801. So that you can help to connect the dots of what's what, what we're proposing, how much of it it is, the size of it and all the rest of that. And those, that, that exhibit that we submitted during the last submission or in the submission that you guys received has a summary of all those, I'll call it general, general numbers, which includes water quality, related numbers, quantity related numbers, as well as groundwater recharge.
Do you know what page those would be on? Cause.
It should have been provided with the package that we submitted as, as part of our, as part of our application. So.
Maybe John can help with that when he gets up.
Yeah. And in fact, if all of our professionals could stand up, I'll swear your whole name. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth? So I just want to affirm, if you could just state your names for the record.
John Taylor, T A Y L O R, Assistant Township Engineer.
So as part of Francis's review memo dated July 19th, 2022, under the stormwater management requirements comment, a comment 4.01 indicates that this is considered a major development because it disturbs more than one acre of property and has to meet all the green infrastructure requirements. So it sounds like something was recently submitted for, to address that comment? Okay. And I, I'm not aware that that's been reviewed yet. But that is, that is a recommendation that that be a condition of approval for the board. And there's other stormwater comments in here that are really specific to review of the prior submission materials.
Have you had a chance to review Francis Guzik's report?
Yes.
So I guess when we, we get to our professionals testimony, then we'll go through all the, all of their, you know, sightings, conditions, recommendations. And you could say yea or nay to some of them and we can talk about it. So, okay. Cause this way you get to move on right now. We'll get, we'll, we'll address this.
He, I know he'd been, had an issue with the recharge because of the soil testing. He said, said some of the soil was absorbing and, and so he had, and that we wouldn't be able to even say, say no to that. So he did have an issue with that. I just still, yeah.
We hear from our professionals, we'll address all the stormwater management issues. The applicant has indicated that they're probably agreeable to everything that our professionals have cited and we can address it then. Otherwise we'll get stuck on, on this testimony. Is that okay?
Fine.
Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Is it okay if I transition now? I was going to talk about the subdivision for a few minutes and then also the site plan itself.
Sure.
Mike, can I just ask you?
Sure.
Can you just reiterate? I know you spoke about parking. Can you confirm since this is a waiver, what the number, what the required number is, what we're proposing with regard to the preliminary A parking?
Sure. For preliminary A, the requirement is 4,696 parking spaces required. The prior approved preliminary, preliminary A from 2014, 2015 was 5,440. And now we are proposing 5,017. There's a reduction.
Okay. Thank you.
And I take it a waiver was granted back in 2014 or 15 for that, for that parking number?
Yes.
Could somebody explain how they got the additional parking for 801? Cause it's well more than one parking spot per unit. So e- even if you add in the employees, it seemed to be a lot of parking.
And I was going to transition into that. Is it okay if I?
As we had indicated, that was really testimony related to the amendments to the GDP. Now we're moving on to testimony specific to the subdivision, preliminary and final subdivision to create the lot where the corporate suites will be located. That's something to be more identified by name, please.
So this, this is the second exhibit that was not submitted with the recent package.
Can you talk, I'm sorry, can you talk into the microphone? Thank you.
So this is exhibit A2. It's, it's called the landscape plan rendering for building 801. Date of the plan itself is 7/6/22. We're passing out 11 by 17 version of it. So what I'd like to do first, just to, just to try to address that issue, because it's relatively small, is the subdivision, just for everyone's awareness. The subdivision we're, we're proposing is located within Phase C of Carnegie Center. Part of all the subdivision requirements that go along with it include the identification of all existing and proposed easements that are, that are for this property. Associated specifically with the 801 site is a sanitary sewer easement that's going to connect across where building 802, 803 are going into building 804. The existing stub that I had mentioned a little while ago. In addition to that, there is a driveway which we are proposing, which in, in effect is going to be a shared, I'll call it access driveway for not just 801, but also the future buildings which are going to come online. So there's going to be a shared access agreement, if you will, or shared access easement that will be created for that. The, the Corman building itself is going to be located within a new lot. So the, the existing lot that's there today is block 7.13, lot 12.06. The Corman building itself is going to be lot 12.061, and that's going to be 8.23 acres. And then the balance of Phase C, the undeveloped portion, if you will, is going to be lot 12.062. And that's going to compromise 41.9 acres total. In total, the, the, I'll call it existing undeveloped portion of Phase C is 50.1344 acres. So I just wanted to.
I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't quite understand that. What's the undeveloped portion of Phase C? I thought you said it first. It was 41.9.
So the existing as it stands today is 50.1344 acres.
Okay.
After we finish the subdivision, the balance that remains of the undeveloped portion will be 41.9.
Great. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is transition now into the site plan portion of it. So some of the more specifics, we can talk about stormwater management as well. So the intent behind this development, we had four TRC meetings with the township. The first two were mostly focused on preliminary A and the last two were mostly focused on building 801. One of the main focus, focus points from the first meeting that we had, Mr. Dobremilsky had brought this up, was the inclusion of a roundabout, if you will. Originally, in our original design that we had, we did not have that feature on the site. But there was some concerns from the town, you know, about potential people coming through the site, speeding and other, other things that that could happen, you know, through this particular site. And we also had a roundabout, not in the same location, but integrated in a prior preliminary A from, from a few years ago. So with his recommendation, we had integrated in a, you know, a new roundabout for this, for this particular project, which is located to the south of, or I should say to the west of building 801. And it was a very critical feature, if you will, that we wanted to make sure we were designing around. And the various other components, including all the connectivity that we're providing, the bicycle lanes that we are providing and sidewalks and everything else are kind of, are kind of built around that, if you will. So I'm going to talk about, a little bit about the building itself and the units that are being proposed. As we mentioned earlier, it's 270, 270 units. 55 of those units are on floor number one of the building. 73 units are on floor number two. 71 units are on both floors, three and four. So both of those floor. The total footprint, square footage of the building is 144,000, approximately 200 square feet. When we designed building 801, there were, there were some additional concerns outside the building itself that we needed to address. And mostly it was, had to do with connectivity. The, there were four separate sidewalk extensions that we are proposing as part of this project. And ask that show the preliminary A exhibit one more time.
That exhibit A1?
Exhibit A1. Put it on the bottom. So at the intersection of Route One and Carnegie Center Boulevard West, which is just to the north of building 901, there is a, also I'll call it a missing sidewalk, if you will, right? There's no sidewalk. there is a, uh, also, I'll call it a, a missing sidewalk, if you will, right? Uh, there's no sidewalk connection. It sort of terminates, if you will. So we're on pointing, we're on pointing my hand right now. We are, we are proposing a new sidewalk. It's approximately two hundred linear feet, uh, in length, and it, and it needs that connectivity that's missing there. That, that was one of the recommendations I came out of the, the TRC meetings. As I work my way around, I've been heading in a, in a westbound direction. So at the intersection of Canal Point Boulevard and Carnegie Center Boulevard West, so it's where my hand is pointing right now, uh, there is also a, I'll call it sort of missing sidewalk at, at your building eight oh four, uh, the existing, uh, wet pond, which with our, with our proposed, uh, condition is going to connect the sidewalks from where the, uh, the existing bus stop is to, uh, to the intersection. So it's going to complete that connection. That's approximately also two hundred linear feet. And then as we head in a more northbound direction up, up, up along, uh, Canal Point Boulevard, there is an additional sidewalk, uh, connection that we're making, which pretty much runs all the way to the new building, uh, eight oh one, which is the Korman building. Length of that total sidewalk that we are proposing is about six hundred fifty linear feet. And then above and beyond that, and this one came out at the last two, uh, TRC meetings that we had from Mr. Guzik, was a, uh, an additional sidewalk connection from where our proposed driveway is along Canal Point Boulevard for building eight oh one to the intersection of York Bridge Drive, which is the existing, I'll call it, uh, condo association, which is right across the street. There were some concerns about having connectivity from that development to the, uh, to the existing bus stop, which is near building eight oh four. And then in addition to that, that sidewalk is going to provide connectivity for the users at building eight oh one all the way to the other uses that we have that are out there today at Market Fair and beyond. So the intent behind that sidewalk, and it's quite long, um, is to complete that connectivity for this building. Uh, as preliminary A advances with, with the, with the additional buildings that are come online, there will be additional points of connectivity and sidewalk connectivity, as we mentioned a little bit earlier, on the south side of building, eight oh, uh, I'm sorry, on the west side of building eight oh one. And then again, we're going to be completing that emergency access shared together with sidewalk and, uh, and, uh, bicycle connectivity, uh, which runs in the north south, north, south direction along Route One.
Uh, we gotta put a, ask for a crosswalk across, uh, Canal Point Boulevard at that point?
Yes, so, uh.
I, I will tell you, it was really exciting crossing it today without one, so.
And, uh, Mr. Guzik had brought this up, because there's a few other locations along the road where, where we have the rapid flash and beacon, uh, identified there. So we, um, uh, you know, through, through a few meetings, we're trying to iron out all the specifics with it, but we are, we are showing that additional extension which runs from the driveway, like I said, in a northbound direction to, uh, York Bridge Drive. And then there's going to be a safe pedestrian crosswalk at that point as well, along with the, uh, uh, rapid flashing beacons associated with it.
On, on the plan, uh, again, point out the, the, uh, roundabout point. So as you see the roundabout there, what was really helpful to me with this plan is to see that there is a future connection to it that's not part of the rendering on the left. Because if you look at the rendering on the left, you want to figure out why the heck do we need a, a roundabout there? But as you can see in the, the rest of the development, that they will have an other road connection, uh, future road connection to be built at some future point in time.
Yes, and that includes the future driveway connection that would, that would connect from the roundabout in a northbound direction to seven oh one.
And, and that's going to extend all the way to, um, NRG there too, right?
Correct, yes. Whenever, whenever the buildings come online.
Could, can you, um, talk a little bit about the barrier? Because you're, you're right across the street there from Canal Point, uh, condos. And, um, I guess right now there's a screen of trees. They're deciduous trees, so I don't know what's, you know, in the, uh, wintertime, they're probably not as great a visual barrier. So what, uh, what are you doing in that little piece of green property over there? Are you going to leave those trees? Are you going to add any additional berms or additional barrier trees or anything like that?
So almost all the trees that are along, uh, Canal Point Boulevard are, are going to remain. And in fact, we went to pretty great lengths when we were designing the sidewalk. We did it, uh, somewhat serpentine type of design, if that makes sense, uh, in conjunction with Mr. Dobromilsky. We wanted to make sure that the existing shade trees that were along Canal Point Boulevard were maintained to the highest extent possible. And then the wooded areas, I think that you're referring to.
Right, it's a little further back from the road. There's no sidewalk there now.
So the only tree, the only trees that are going to be removed are, are the trees that are there to put in the new driveway that's, that's being proposed. Everything else is to remain.
Are you going to add any trees to block that? Uh, because, because otherwise they're going to be looking in a parking lot, so.
So I'm going to transition a bit over to the A two exhibit now, and you can see it a little bit more clearly on here, uh, the type of vegetation that we're proposing. While we're talking about landscaping, I was going to talk about this a little bit later, but in total on the site, uh, we're only removing seventy-one trees to do our proposed improvements, but planting three hundred and four new trees as part of this, as part of this development. Hundred and one of those are evergreen trees.
You show some landscaping berm on, on the, uh, on Route One side. How high the berm is?
How much, how, how high? How much? Ten, ten feet tall?
Is there going to be a berm on the, uh, other side too? On the Canal Point side?
Not, not as part of this project, no.
But there will be evergreen trees put in there to, to block the view?
So, so that, the existing buffer that's there today is pretty thick, it's pretty heavy. Uh, a lot of trees are, are deciduous in nature.
Yeah.
But we're not planning to remove or really touch any of those, uh, those existing trees that are there as part of this project. So I'm just going to continue. There, there was a question that came up on one of the reports, uh, I think it was Mr. Novak's report. Wanted to get some relation of the height of the building that we're proposing right now versus the other buildings that are there today. Um, building eight oh one is fifty-eight foot tall. That's, that's what we're proposing. Eight oh four is forty-six feet, nine and a half inches tall. And then building seven oh one was fifty-six feet point three three feet tall. So it gives a little bit of relation about what we're talking about in terms of height and, and so on and so forth. There's a, there's a few variances that we are proposing for this project. I'll just bring those up real quick. I know these will be addressed by our planner, but I'll just bring them up. Um, our building right now is set back more or less of what the requirement is. The requirement, generally speaking, for a building off Route One is a hundred twenty-five feet from, from the right of way line or the property line. There's a few decorative, I'll call it, uh, architectural elements that are on the front side of the building, cornices, if you will, that are protruding away from the flat face or the structural part of the building. So our actual building setback from those cornices to, uh, to the right of way line is a hundred and twenty-two feet. So, so that's one of the variances that we're asking for, and it's not a structural element, it's an architectural element, it's decorative element, if you will. One of the other requirements as part of the, uh, buildings that are on here, if a building, uh, hits a certain height, um, then the setback, uh, increases. So it's, it's depending on how much, uh, how much higher that you are than, than the general requirement, you have to set the building back that much more from, from the right of way line. So the, the actual requirement that's associated with that, I believe, is a hundred and sixty, I think it's a hundred sixty-eight feet. And whereas we are proposing with the cornices, a hundred and twenty-three feet from the right of way line. So there's two separate variances, but they both have to do with the setback, uh, of the site.
Michael, can you just explain the, there is an increase, um, over forty-five feet so that the additional setback here, the front yard setback, is based upon the exceedance over the forty-five up to the fifty-eight?
Correct, and it's three feet of additional setback for every one foot above the forty-five. So that's how they calculate the number of additional setback that we require. That's the hundred and sixty-eight foot that I had just mentioned.
Sixty-four.
One six, one sixty-four, so it's one six hundred sixty-four feet, sorry, apologies. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about, um, some of the other elements that are on the site right now. And we'd like to think when we designed this, that we added a lot of the green elements into, into the design. Bicycle connectivity was one of them. Light lanes are incorporated into the driveways throughout the, throughout the development. It's also incorporated into the emergency access drive, which runs around the perimeter on the east and south sides of the building. In addition to that, pedestrian connectivity runs around the entire building as well. Uh, we added some additional sidewalk, uh, around the south side of the building during the, uh, TRC process to complete the connectivity. At some point, uh, although it's not part of this project, uh, the sidewalk that we have to the immediate west of the building is going to connect through to the building eight oh two, eight oh three site, and eventually to building eight oh, eight oh one. The same emergency access driveway that we had discussed also is going to complete that connection as well, uh, whenever the eight oh two, eight oh three building comes online. Uh, truck turning movements were, were a particular concern when we were designing the site, as they are for most site development projects, especially around the roundabout. Uh, we wanted to make sure that it was designed to handle at least a WB fifty-sized truck, although we don't really see a lot of those around Carnegie Center. It's not a, it's not a common truck that comes through, but it, but we also designed it to accommodate the, the, the turning movements for a, uh, West Windsor Township fire truck as well. So we have a little bit of an irregular shape, I'll call it, of the landscaping. So one of the comments that Mr. Dobromilsky had presented as reports was to try to create some kind of green feature at the center of the roundabout, uh, to give it a little aesthetic flair to it. So we're proposing three columnar-type trees that are, that are in the middle there. Um, and it's kind, it's got not a perfect circle, if you will. So those are going to be kind of situated in a somewhat irregularly shaped, uh, area. But we are completing the rest of this with a type of paper, uh, type system that, that goes around the outside. And that way, uh, it maintains the, I'll call it, degree of aesthetics that, that Mr. Dobromilsky was looking for at the time. While we're talking a little bit about landscaping as well, um, one of the biggest features that's associated with Carnegie Center East as you're driving around Carnegie Center Drive is the fact that they have like a double row of trees on either side as you're, as you're navigating around, um, the roadway. We were, the intent behind the, the west side was to sort of mimic that, if you will. Uh, so the, the entrance drive that's running in a east to west direction that's running through the site has this double row of trees integrated into it. More trees will be added in when the future buildings to the north come in, at, whenever that is. But for the current state, we have about twenty trees or so that were integrated on the, on the north side of the driveway to sort of mirror, if you will, what's on the south side of the driveway, uh, for the Korman site. EV charging stations, obviously, we, we need to comply with the New State of New Jersey law with regard to that. Uh, we are proposing a total of, uh, sixteen garage EV charging stations, as well as six surface parking spaces for, for EV charging. So that has been, uh, added to the design. Um, in addition to that, there is a generator, uh, emergency generator, if you will, that is being proposed. It's on the, uh, southeastern corner of the building. Uh, it has a pad that's associated with it, uh, that is twelve by twenty-four feet. As I had mentioned before, when I was talking about preliminary A, access to the site is provided off of Route One. Again, it's also provided off of Canal Point Boulevard. So, uh, we are maintaining, again, that existing accessway off of Route One that is there today. We're not trying to change that because of the existing NJDOT access permit. With regard to parking, and, uh, this is kind of circling back from, from the prior, uh, preliminary A discussion, the ratio parking that's on the site is kind of unique. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, this is a larger building with a smaller parking requirement. Much of the parking that we're proposing for this is underground. So, uh, we're conserving space and, and, and other, uh, land area, if you will, by putting the parking underground. But with the ratio that this actually comes out to is only one point two three six parking spaces per one thousand square feet. Whereas where you would see with a typical office building, something on the order of four spaces per one thousand square feet. So this is much less than you would see for the same mass of building, if you will, or a similar mass of building, uh, that, that would be for, uh, an office building. Uh, we have three hundred and three garage parking spaces proposed, a hundred and forty-one surface parking spaces. So again, much less number here, but a total of four hundred and forty-four total parking spaces. The need for the parking spaces comes from a variety of different reasons. Um, this is, this building has several amenities and also several office spaces, conference rooms and other things that are going to be used by its various guests. Um, it's my understanding these services are free of charge. Uh, obviously Jeff, who spoke a little bit earlier for Korman, will give a little bit more detail concerning this. Primary reason for this parking, this, this, the same parking models would use at their other facilities, which include the one at Thorn Park, I think Blue Bell as well, Pennsylvania, and, and, and other locations similar. Meeting spaces are also as part, part of those amenities, uh, that, uh, that are provided, fitness and wellness, game-type, uh, amenities as well, and, and things like this. Drop-offs. Uh, there's two major drop-off, drop-offs for this, uh, project. We have one that's right, pretty much right flat on the north side of the building as you, as you enter. Very similar in nature, I think, to the type of drop-off that you would see for really any hotel-type building. This is a corporate suite, so it's a little bit different type of user experience. But we wanted to create something, you know, through the recommendations of Mr. Dobromilsky and others, something that looks nice across here, but is consistent with their brand, Korman's brand is what we're talking about, what they have done in other, other facilities. There's a secondary drop-off area which is located to the, to the west of the building. Um, as part of that drop-off that's there, uh, there's also a kind of like a decorative patio area, like welcome area, if you will, for folks to come outside and sit down, do other things, again, adding some aesthetics to, to, to the design that we are proposing. Um, in terms of deliveries that are expected at the site, this is not like your typical industrial facility, right? Where you're seeing lots of truck traffic and the like. Uh, you know, the, the township ordinance, uh, with regard to the number of loading spaces that are required are really more geared towards that kind of like, uh, I'll call it, use. This is really not that. The types of deliveries we're talking about here are like box truck deliveries, right? Um, one to two times a day is probably too much, you know, but that's probably the worst it's going to get. Um, and that may include, uh, Amazon-type deliveries, but most of the deliveries that they have are, are doing things like laundry and bringing in linens and other things like that. So there is no proposed restaurant as part of this building, right? So there's no, you know, they may have some, a whole, some food delivery that may come in and things like that. But generally speaking, the amount of truck volume that's going to be passed through this site is very, very small.
So Michael, the ordinance, uh, requires four loading spaces, um, and we are proposing three. And can you identify where those are on the site and how those are approached?
Sure. So we, uh, at least internally amongst our team, we're calling the loading area the service area, the service road, if you will. So it's located on the, I'll call it, south, uh, western side of the building, um, sort of where my hand is, is, is pointing to right now. That's also the same location where trash is going to be handled privately and, and taken out and removed from the site. Um, so trash is actually just taken from the building and comes outside, and then it goes to whatever truck is, is being picked up. There's no dumpsters being proposed here or anything like that. Okay? I'll talk a little bit. So the, the way we designed that service road, just as a side note, we stacked three WB fifties, one on top of the other. The chances of that happening at a site are probably next to never, but that's how we came up with the, the, the three loading spaces, if you will. More, the more likely scenario is that you're going to see a box truck come in the back there once to twice per day, probably more like once to twice per week is, is going to be the, the more regular frequency with regard to that. And then obviously, uh, garbage pickup and delivery and recycling as well. So, um, I did want to talk about bicycle parking and some of the other parking elements of this as well. So with regard to bicycle parking, uh, we are proposing twenty-four stalls, which are located on the, uh, call it, south, uh, western side of the building again. Um, we have a, uh, an entrance driveway that goes to the underground garage, sort of in the adjacent location where the bicycle areas are going. Reason for the location of it being over there, so they have access to the changing rooms and other things like that. We had moved it around a few times during the design process, but that made the most sense to put it there. Um, our, A, our, we have several ADA spaces which are proposed or for in compliance with the, with the national regulations, as well as New Jersey regulations, putting them as close, uh, to the, uh, the front entrance way of, of both, um, I'll call it, uh, entrance, uh, or drop-off areas, if you will, and making sure that they have a clear accessible path to, to the front of the building. I'll talk a little bit now about our general design approach for the site and how and the factors that impacted like what we ultimately ended up here. Wetlands on the site are are generally right now a a concern in that we want to make sure that we are disturbing them to the to the least extent that we could possibly do. We positioned the building in such a way that it would be compliant with the NJDP regulations with regard to getting general permits. We wanted to make sure that we were having the least amount of impact on those things in 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 the various locations we're proposing. Areas where we are impacting the wetlands include where the new driveway is coming off of Canal Point Boulevard. There's a small area that's running through our our proposed surface parking space, which is on the west western side of the building. And there's also a a pocket that we were trying to avoid on the southeastern portion of the building as well, close to where the berm is. So our goal was to try to minimize our disturbance of that for this project with the understanding that, you know, we have future applications that are coming in. We'll have to deal with those on a case by case basis with regard to those environmental disturbances. Now, while those things are are proposed to be disturbed, there's no flood hazard areas that we have to deal with on this project site. And so I suppose one of the benefits of Carnegie Centers, they don't have to deal with that. Now that said, the site is within review zone B of the DNR Canal Commission. And there's a a good portion of the flood hazard area from that canal that exists within the existing residential development that's there. So one of the things that we have to evaluate from a stormwater point of view is that is the downstream tailwater to make sure that our development, you know, can store enough water on our end during a very large storm event like a hundred year event so that it does not impact those downstream existing communities and developments and so on and so forth that are that are that are maybe adversely impacted from from a large storm event from the canal. Stormwater management on the site, as I mentioned, we designed it in accordance with the D P regulations. Green infrastructure was a big component to this. We are proposing pervious pavement in pretty much every single surface parking space that we have on site. This is this is a bit of a change from the prior submissions that we've done in Carnegie Center. We're above ground basins, we're still permissible under older regulations, including building eight oh four, building seven oh one and the like. Now we're treating stormwater at its source, as I had mentioned a little while ago earlier. And we're using several types of BMPs on the site or or detention bases. So pervious pavement is one of them, treats water quality on the site, but also does water quantity control. We have pervious pavement not just in the parking spaces, but we also have it as part of the emergency access drive that runs around the perimeter of the building. So we've incorporated it there as well. And then, in addition to that, we have two proposed sort of terrorist bioinfiltration basins, which are located to the west of the sort of in between where the roundabout is and and the western parking lot. And those two bio retention basins do things twofold. They provide water quality. They also provide quantity reductions as well. We have a final, I'll call it, detention basin, which is a underground structured detention basin, which is intended only to to take in clean roof runoff from the building itself. So that's located, we have right now proposed on the northeastern side of the building. And as a whole, the system is designed to meet the stormwater management requirements. As I had mentioned, we have applications into NJDP. We will have one into the DNR Canal Commission County Planning Board, as well as the Seoul Conservation District, which will all have a crack at at review of that.
Under like Francis's report, I know he said that your testing has shown that most of your soils primarily impermeable. To infiltration, so how's that going to work with the pervious pavement and the pervious parking lot?
So one of the unfortunate things about this area of the state is that unlike the southern part of New Jersey, which has lots of sandy soils, we're sort of at the interface where it's not so sandy and it starts to it starts to get sandy. Yeah, we're sort of sort of at that interface here. Carnegie Center has notoriously in the past, and it's, I guess it's unfortunate from that point of view, that the soils out here are not really conducive towards infiltration. We had the same experience when we did building eight oh four, when we did building four oh eight on the east side, building seven oh one and the like. We experienced similar conditions here. When we did the testing, there were spot locations which achieved infiltration rates that were acceptable. But in order for those rates to be utilized, you have to repeat the test. And when we did, we were not getting, we were not getting the acceptable infiltration rates. So like I said, our our application is under review by the various review agencies. We're waiting to hear back technical comments with regard to stormwater management, how they want to approach it. They want us to infiltrate. We will remove the underdrain that we have in our pervious pavement systems and infiltrate. If they don't want us to do that, then we're going to leave it in there. So we we believe right now we are designing it conservatively with the underdrain underneath the pervious pavements.
Okay, so you're putting a you're putting a drain under there. So, okay, okay, that was that was my question, thank you.
Yeah, and the pervious pavement system has two types of drains. One is an underdrain and the other is an emergency spill line. So in case a very large storm event comes in, it doesn't flood out the parking lot, if that makes sense. Right signage, I did want to talk about that real quick. There was the topic that we had discussed a little bit earlier about the Carnegie Center East and West Side that was done back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen with regard to the signage package. We are proposing signs that are consistent with the rest of the monument signs, directional signs, traffic control signs that were installed campus wide back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So some of these signs that we are proposing, though, are not conforming with the current regulations within West Windsor Township. So therefore, we're requesting some of those waivers that Mr. Novak had identified in his report. The three major signs I'll bring to everyone's attention are the three monument signs. We're proposing a monument sign pretty much right at the northeastern corner of of the development, close to where the berm is and where the proposed driveway is coming off Route One. So there's a monument sign proposed there. There's another monument sign proposed off of Canal Point Boulevard, where the proposed driveway is being located. And then we have a third monument sign, which is sort of just immediately to the north of where building eight oh one is located and where the proposed through driveway is located to give directional signage about the building and then potentially future buildings that may come online.
Michael, the monument signs are those the ones where we're seeking relief to permit the sign height of seven and a half feet where four feet is permitted?
Yes, and these signs, just for for clarity, and we did include a sign package as part of this mission that we made. They're they're sort of like a monolith type of design. It's not like you have posts and then you have the sign on top. This is it's just a consistent sign that goes from like top to bottom. So even the even the directional signage that we're providing, as well as a traffic control signage, it's not the typical MUTCD signage that most people are accustomed towards seeing. It's sort of custom towards Carnegie Center. These are these are kind of custom signs, if you will.
Can you walk through, if you need your list, the waivers that we're seeking with regard to signs? If you can identify which ones we are seeking waivers for and the section, just so that we can match them up with the ones that were were listed in the planners' report?
Yes, so I'll bear with me, I'll try to run through these as quickly as I can. So section two hundred dash thirty two B four C, directional sign, maximum sign area of two square feet is required. Nine square feet is provided. Section two hundred dash thirty two B four C, where pedestrian maximum sign area of two square feet is required. Six square feet and three point five square square feet are provided on signs A three point one dash one and A three point two dash one. Section two hundred thirty two B four C, the wayfinding sign, max sign area is two square feet is required. And then eight point two square feet, seven point six square feet and five point two square feet are provided for signs B one point one dash one, E one point two dash one, and B one point three dash one respectively.
Can you just explain what those designation sign B one, is that an identification of the sign type or the location on the plan?
Those are the sign types, so it's a wayfinding sign around around the the property.
So on the, whatever we call it, the the package that shows the different sign types, you'd be able to look at that number and find the type of sign on the package of signage that was provided?
Yes, and so so all the all the numbers that I'm reading off here are in that sign package that was.
Let me ask, what document are you reading from? What document are you reading from?
Well, the document that I'm talking about with the sign package was provided as part of the submission.
I understand is is the document that you have in your hand is not, is that, has that not been submitted?
That was part of the application package, was it?
It's part, part, no, these are just my notes, but the the package that we provided was provided, I think it's a penta deluxe or pentagram, I think it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's it, yes.
The one we have has twenty waivers, let's.
I'm sorry?
I said, the one we got has twenty waivers. Is that the one you?
Yes, yeah, so yeah, the waiver summary is, I think that's what you're talking about. Yeah, so the waiver summary was submitted as well, yes. And I'm reading pretty much directly from that right now on my on my notes here.
Michael, do we actually have a visual of the monument signs?
In that package that was provided.
Show me. Yeah, I can't tell, I can't tell, show me. I mean, the monument sign for the Corbin Suites, the monument sign, or, you know, the other monument sign.
So show me like, what does it look like?
So if you go to page three of the submitted package that was done by the one that I was reading off, or I believe it was
Okay, so the ones that we're looking for in the pentagram package are A two, three point one. And then A two point two dash.
Okay, so the three, the three dash one shows us a sign that's three foot nine in height by two three wide, is that correct?
Yep, yes, that is correct.
And how's that compared to our ordinance on that particular?
So the pedestrian sign max area is two square feet, and I think we had proposed for A two three point one. And actually, I I don't think we are, I don't think, as I'm looking through this, I don't see it as a as a violation for that particular sign. So I'm I'm looking on my.
So for the the larger sign, where would that be in this package?
The other one that I had mentioned was A two point two dash one.
Two point two dash. Two three wide by seven six tall, I thought you said seven feet.
That's three feet wide by ten feet high, is that going to happen?
I'm looking at A two point two dash one, correct?
One dash one or two?
Yes, so. So yeah, seven, seven feet, six inches tall and two feet, three, two feet, three inches wide.
And so that would be the the Corbin Suite sign, even though it says something different here.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and where and now, having seen the sign on this page, show me where it is on the the site.
So A I need the site plans.
Or no, no, you can show me right on the the plan right there, probably.
Okay, so the three, the three locations, the monument sign, so the, I believe it's the A two, A two point two dash one are located on either end, if you will, right? So the one that is coming off of Route One and also the one is on Canal Point Boulevard. And then the smaller sign, I believe, is located just north of building eight oh one, which is that A two point two point three dash one.
Now, what I don't see in the the two, I'll call them for road signs, which is the the bigger sign, the two foot three by seven six, any illumination upon them or within them?
So our site is very well lit. So part of the, one of the requirements in West Windsor Township is to make sure that intersections have a four foot candle minimum requirement. So we have, this site is is very well lit for all these sites as part of our stanchions that we're providing. I was going to provide a little testimony on that in a few minutes. So there's no need for additional illumination on those sites.
I mean, I I just sort of wish that your sign presentation actually had the visual image of what one would see upon being at the site. You know, I mean, like, you know, was Corbin going to have their logo on it? I mean, are they going to use Carnegie Center standard graphics? You know, that the this has been a a poor presentation of what will actually be on site.
So so the sign package that we have provided is what it's going to look like. The numbering of the building, obviously, you know, that was identified, for instance.
So Corbin's not using any logo, they're going to use Carnegie Center standards of 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 lettering?
For for the for the building identification, correct? And that's consistent with the rest of Carnegie Center.
For but for the monument sign, which we're talking about, they're going to use Carnegie Center standards of of lettering?
Yeah, and they, for some of their tenants that they have, that Boston Properties has, they also have, sometimes they have like a smaller version of the logo of whatever tenant is being used.
I'm thinking of the Hyatt part of Carnegie Center across the street, Hyatt. They've changed their logo many times over the many years they've been there. They use, they still use their their logo.
Yeah, and the Hyatt is probably the one exception at Carnegie Center. Greg, I don't know if you want to.
I mean, I understand the consistency with, you know, strong visual image Carnegie Center, but I also understand the operator wanting to use their their branding.
Right, so generally throughout the entire campus, it's the top three by square footage will have their name on those building monument signs that it's identifying what it is. In certain instances, will allow those companies to use a logo as part of their identification. Example, that would be LabCorp, which is in building two oh six. You know, Hyatt's another great example of that. And the way these built, these signs are, they can be overlaid with a new logo over them. So if company changes their name, BioClinica went to Clarion, you know, we can easily put on a new logo that goes over the existing one. The idea is to have a consistent design. It's these pillars with the green, which is the Carnegie Center green marquee that we use, and it's consistent throughout the entire campus. It'll be the same for Corbin. They'll have Corbin's name on it, just like NRG does and Princeton University. But it's easily swapped out.
I'm just going to finish reading the remaining waivers. It's okay for for the for the signage. I think I left off with section two hundred thirty two B four C, where the directional sign max area of two square feet is required, five square feet is provided on on sign B two point one dash one. And then section two hundred thirty two B four B dash C, four B and C. It is a directory sign, max sign area of two square feet and sign type of wall is required or where that is required, eight point nine square feet. And a ground type is provided on sign B two point one dash one.
Did you cover the the ground mounted sign? Because we don't have a pedestal. Two hundred thirty two B three D.
There's two additional ones, two hundred dash thirty two B three C, where a monument sign height of four feet is required. A maximum sign height of seven point five feet is provided on A two point two dash one. And that refers to the one of the monument signs that we had just discussed. And then section two hundred dash thirty two B three D, where the ground mounted project ID sign base height of at least seventeen percent of the sign height is required. Zero percent of the sign height is provided on sign A.
Is that because it is, as you said, a single unit, it is not a sign mounted on a foundation or base?
Correct, yes. Correct, yes. So, one of the other things, I just wanted to talk about lighting real quick. So lighting, we have LED lighting proposed throughout, throughout the site, there's building mounted lighting as well as stanchion lighting. Uh, 25-foot tall poles is what we're proposing. The utilities that are being proposed on site, as I mentioned earlier, are coming mostly off of Route One, and that is the, the water, the gas, the electric, the telecom. Sanitary sewer is coming from the south of the building, connecting into Building 804. Stormwater management on site, the site generally grades in a east to west direction towards the canal. And our site is graded this way, the existing site that's out there, uh, the grades follow in the same drainage pattern, so we're not changing that. And we have stormwater management piping system designed throughout, which consists mostly of HDPE piping. And in a few locations, uh, concrete piping, where we have our proposed culvert located at the Canal Point driveway. We have a few additional retaining walls that we're proposing, just for awareness, um, one is proposed on either side of the driveway at Canal Point Boulevard. And then lastly, uh, where the proposed roundabout is located on the, uh, west side of it, there, we have a proposed retaining wall located there as well, to avoid impacts of wetlands and things like this.
Michael, with regards to the utilities for the site plan, you had identified where they were, there's adequate, uh, service to be provided to the, uh, the proposed corporate suites?
Yes.
Okay, um, and with regard to lighting, uh, we are requesting two waivers, can you identify, um, uh, the waivers that are being requested as to the, um, maximum intensity that we are exceeding? At the property line, and then I think the average foot candle exceedance, um, that's also being requested, I think items 14 and 15 on your chart.
Yes, and that's, uh, from ordinance sections 200 dash 31K3 and, uh, 231K4. Uh, the lighting intensities exceeding one-foot candle, uh, are, are proposed. Uh, this is a slightly against different use than what we have, we have it to somewhat of a, I'll call it residential use, but, but it's a corporate suites type of use that's being proposed here. In the middle of a office campus, right, that's going to be future. So the, the lighting intensities that we're proposing on here are more similar in nature to the office side of things than it would be like a traditional residential development that, that would be around. So that's the general rationale behind the lighting, uh, requirements for that one, um, and.
Let me just get the, the, uh, the one, the one-foot candle exceedance at the property lines, that's not, there are certain locations and intersections, I think, is that where those exceedances are at the property lines?
So, um, we had a similar situation that came up with Building 804, where some of the exceedances from the lighting went into the northern properties. But again, this is a corporate campus that, that's being proposed here, so we're not adjacent to resident, residential uses where those light, lighting exceedances are, are happening. And then, as required by the ordinance, the intersections have to be designed with a four-foot candle, then, brief, brief candle, thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, this, what we're proposing, although they exceed, is for the, the nature of the use to provide adequate lighting for safety and, uh, and circulation for the users?
Yes.
Is this, uh, lighting going to be visible from across the street where, where they are residential?
No, we don't think it's, all, all the lighting that we have, the difference between LED lighting and traditional lighting that's been used in the past, like metal halide or high-pressure sodium. Is that these lights are able to very, very specifically focus in a downward direction, very specific light. So all the lighting that we have proposed here for the LED lighting are focused downward, so everything's.
You, what's your idea?
Sorry.
Yeah, you had mentioned that the lighting is LED, that allows us to control the lighting, um, with a timer, is that correct?
Yes, so, and this is, this question has been asked on, I think, the last three applications we've made, so a timer can be implemented as necessary, so that perhaps some of the lights, uh, turn off. You know, at certain hours of the night, and can be turned on again, uh, as necessary.
And we'll be able to work with the board, um, to determine what lights they, um, should be adjusted and cooperation, or coordination, I should say, with Corman. Uh, in light of their security needs, um, because they could have, um, the clientele coming in in the evening, but will we work with the board to identify appropriate lights that can be adjusted?
Yes, yeah, and dust till dawn operation as well, so these, these are typical requirements, uh, usually coming from Mr. Goozey.
All right, but, but the reason I'm asking is it's not an office, and so therefore people might be, you might have different security needs, given the nature of the use, so, um, we can work with them. Can you also identify, you had spoken about, um, the landscaping and the parking, and I'm not sure, um, there are certain, um, limitations on how many vehicles can be in a row in the parking. I believe we have one row of parking that has 21 spaces, where 20 are permitted as a maximum, that's your item for, uh, 200 dash 27M3. Can you just tell us that would be in the, uh, grade, at grade surface parking lot?
Yes, yeah, that has to do with the surface parking lot, which is located to the, I'll call it, west of the, of the proposed building. And, um, in a lot of the orientation that we have for the parking was based upon general alignment for the entrances going into the building. So that exceedance that we're requesting is really more or less so that we have like a consistent design that makes sense with regard to where the islands are, and then where it's, where it's entering it, where the drop-off is, and then to that second entrance on the west side.
Okay, and the other item, you had, you had testified that there are over 300 trees being provided, but we are seeking relief from, um, section 200 dash 91P7, which requires, um, uh, two trees per 10 parking spaces. In the area of the parking, and I think, um, 89 were identified as the total required and 29 are being provided. And I think the way we calculated, 29 are the required number for the outdoor parking.
Correct, yes, surface parking.
Surface parking, so only if you're required to provide trees based upon the number of parking spaces in the garage, we would have this, the, uh, we would have an inadequate number, is that how it was calculated?
Yes, and, and, uh, one, one note about that, um, we've, uh, met with Mr. Dobromylski over the years on a variety of different projects, and we tried to come up with solutions on how to deal with that type of an issue. There is, uh, an end treatment that we're, that we have for our islands, where we have like these three trees that are being proposed, which is similar in nature to what was done for Building 804, Building 408 Parking Lot, so on and so forth, and also for the solar projects. So we tried to implement a similar type of design, uh, for this, for this project, and, and with the understanding that we had that deficiency, uh, you know, as part of, part of the design. And then in addition to that, providing the additional trees, uh, we have to meet, um, certain requirements from NJDEP for the detention basins. So the, the vegetation and the trees that we're proposing inside those basins, those bio infiltration basins, are generally intended to meet the DEP requirements, not necessarily the West Windsor Township requirements.
Um, and on that point, can you just describe, I don't think I could state it properly, the waiver that we're seeking from, uh, 200 dash 100.1 with regard to the, um, uh, bio infiltration basin and the design of the facility?
Yeah, what we're really, I think what, um, Mr. Dobromylski was really talking about there, it's the grading that, that is being proposed with the basins. Um, and we have a design that is essentially a budding up against an existing parking lot, so it's, it's difficult to avoid the, I'll call it linear nature of that, if that makes sense. So, um, but we, we did our best to still meet the stormwater management requirements, you know, for, for volume and for quality control, but at the same time, you know, given the constraints of a parking lot, that it is a linear thing, that it has linear grading that's associated with it.
So there was, it was.
Is that the grading, or is that the circumference being irregular?
It's, it's both, but they're, they're both tied in together in, in the same sort of fashion, if you will.
Uh, and finally, with regard to the waivers, you had spoken about the parking, um, and, uh, ordinance section 200 dash 91 with regard to the type of striping that's being provided. Uh, we're doing something different, I believe, in the, uh, surface parking versus the, uh, parking garage.
Yeah, so when we approached this issue, I, we were just being conservative here with regard to, uh, asking for the, the waiver. There are some parking garages in Carnegie Center that have hairpin striping, and there are some parking garages that have this regular single line stripe. So what we're proposing on here, at least at the current time, is, is single line striping, but it could be hairpin if it's necessary, we are including the waiver just as an act of caution, if you will, for consistency.
Mike, you mentioned retaining walls, can you show the, where the walls are and the height and the length of those walls?
Sure, so, uh, on the west side of where the proposed roundabout is, I don't have the exact linear footage, but I can give you an estimate. So it's approximately, uh, it's about 200, uh, linear feet of retaining wall, almost 200 linear feet of retaining wall, I think, on the west side of where the roundabout is. Uh, there's also a retaining wall separation between where the proposed detention basins are, uh, and, uh, the parking lot, actually, sorry, no, not there, uh, it's on the, uh, south, uh, western side where the driveway is. There's two retaining structures on either side of where that, uh, driveway is, both of them are approximately 50 foot long.
And how high the, those walls are?
The walls near the, uh, where the proposed driveway is, is something around, uh, 16 feet tall.
16 feet?
Six to eight foot tall.
16?
Yeah, six to eight foot tall, and then the one that's on the other side, uh, is something around the same, it's about eight foot tall.
Okay, thank you.
The other one is that Dave had another one with regard to more than 60 spaces in a module to the parking lot.
Yes.
Section 229F3.
Yeah, so section 229 dash M, M3, and, uh, it's, the, the intent behind it is to break up the parking lot a bit. But with our design that we have proposed, we have several islands that we are proposing in between here, and we are requesting relief for that, for that reason, fact that we have in there, the fact that we're also integrating things like previous payment. And we are putting several perimeter trees around, around the outside of the parking lot.
So this is to break up 60, if you have a lot with more than 60 spaces, you're supposed to try to break them up?
Correct.
And that's the last one that I think you were asking. You just go, uh, back to the subdivision, um, we are in compliance with the, um, the, uh, design of the lot, is that correct? In terms of the, uh, the standards, we need the standards for the lots you were creating?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and, uh, can you just explain, one of the items that I mentioned was the, uh, section 35, the fact that, um, the, um, access road from Route One provides access to our lot. But it does invite a road that we have access to through an easement arrangement, correct?
That's correct, so even though our site does directly abut, uh, Route One, uh, the driveway that, that we're accessing to our site is going to be a shared access driveway. So, uh, it's a technicality, but it is still technically a variance, so we're, we're requesting relief from that, uh, because it's not, it's not within the lot itself that we're proposing, the driveway.
And the, since the statute requires, um, we don't, the lot abuts the street giving access, and technically, uh, the street isn't what gives access, it's the private road here that's giving you the private, uh, driveway. Can you just describe, um, the, um, the dimensions of that road and the adequacy of that road to provide emergency access, uh, to the, uh, corporate suites? How emergency vehicles will approach it from the public street?
Sure, uh, so the, the driveway that we have proposed, uh, here is similar in nature to the one that was proposed for Building 804. It's 34 foot wide, we have two five-foot wide, uh, bicycle lanes on either side, which obviously can be driven into if necessary, if emergency vehicles need to do that. Uh, so the width that we have here, that, that, if you subtract the two, um, you know, we're talking about a 22-foot wide, uh, you know, regular driveway, if you will, for regular passenger vehicles. So it's, it's more than wide enough to accommodate a WB50 or a West Windsor Township fire truck and so on and so forth. We provided truck turning exhibits as part of our submission package at the end of the site.
And the, um, the access is also adequate once you leave the, uh, the road that you described and enter the building, uh, enter the lot, I'm sorry, the lot, uh, where the building will be located.
Yes, yeah, and we did do truck turning exhibits as well for the West Windsor Township fire truck through the site, so, uh, again, we're trying to provide access on at least three sides of the building, but in this particular case, it's actually providing on all four sides.
That's, uh, what we have for this witness at this time, subject to our right to recall if there's other questions.
Okay.
No, I just had a quick, just a quick question, on, on the question of this variance, um, that you're seeking to permit approval of the subdivision and post-development on lots that do not, do not abut a street. That really isn't a variance, that's a directed issuance of a permit for a lot, not abutting the street, correct?
Well, it's a planning variance under the statute.
I don't think it's variance, I think it's directed issuance of a permit, but either way, we'll, we'll work that out, Meryl.
We can take a break, chat. But, um, we usually ask for it as what we call a planning variance, it's not held to the standard, I, I don't understand it to be held to the standard of a C variance. We, the, the, the issue is whether there's emergency, safe access, um, and, and I guess whatever we call it, it's a form of relief that we think we need to ask for, thank you.
Is that, that it for this witness?
Oh, that is, with this witness, yes.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we're going to go past 10, so I'm going to just call a, a quick recess for, you know, five, no more than, uh, no less than five minutes and more than 10 minutes.
The only one, was the one that I said, I was mostly, I, I think they're fine, and I think you have the timers on, the only question is do you put the same time on it for the law of disability that you do for a horse? But isn't that something you go over with them for? And that I, yeah, I don't see that as a problem. Yes, we need to talk about time. Well, we could go to the ordinance, the question is, do we want to put in? Because that way, he's telling them what has the programs and the other one.
Yeah, just cut it, yeah, cut it down, so I know what the children get.
Save traffic also, I don't think, there's not going to be. I'd like to try to get open traffic, yeah, I think if we could just. Yeah, I think if we could just say John, who was on autopilot, doesn't have, I mean, he's, he knows. Oh, let's ask everybody if that's.
We definitely not. I don't see how. Yeah, they got four more witnesses. No, that's why I texted.
And the architect has a.
I texted him around.
What do you say?
This is, we definitely, this is tense, this is trying to. So I'd like to get through the app.
Yes, makes sense.
And then.
Make sure, make sure.
We would have thought, we got there either. How are you?
Please take a seat. Thank you. Okay. Who's your next witness? Counsel, who's your next witness?
Our next witness is our traffic engineer. Bruce, you want to get your credentials in? If you've been sworn, but please advise or put your name in again, with your associated position and any licenses that you hold.
Sure. Again, it's Bruce Klein, K L E I N, with T and M Associates. I am the traffic engineer for the applicant on this project. My educational background, I have a bachelor's of science degree in engineering from Rutgers University, civil engineer from nineteen ninety-six. I've been practicing engineering for over twenty years, specifically traffic engineering. I am a professional engineer and I also hold a professional traffic operations engineer certification that is nationally recognized.
Is it current in New Jersey?
Current in New Jersey.
Thank you.
And have you appeared before other boards to be accepted as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
Yes, I have. In fact, this board on the previous preliminary A and building eight oh four N R G site.
We asked the board to accept him as an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
You seem so qualified.
Thank you. All right. To start, can you just identify for the board the document, the, the name of the study that was submitted and the date that you'll be referring to?
Sure. In fact, we, we prepared two independent traffic studies. The first traffic study is entitled Traffic Impact Study, Proposed Carnegie Center West Preliminary A Sixth Amendment, which was recently revised May twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-two. That's specific, that went over the entire preliminary A site plan with the remaining buildings to be built and we prepared a traffic study which went over a roadway network adjacent to this site, which included Canal Point Boulevard, basically from Alexander Road down to Meadow Road. There was five public intersections that we analyzed. And there was also all of the site driveways that are part of the preliminary A site plan, which there are a total of eight driveways, which I believe were, were shown on the previous exhibit for the preliminary A Sixth Amendment. Those driveways really are essentially the same exact driveways which were represented in the Fifth Amendment also. As Mr. Thomas indicated, there was just a slight change with the Route One driveway to conform on the plan to conform with the current one that is built on Route One today, that is, has been there for, for many years.
Could you advise the board of the nature of this study that you undertook and what the results of that study was and conclusions that you've drawn?
Sure. Again, this is for preliminary A, the entire development for parcel C. What we did was, because of the Quorman site, it was, was previously testified that the size of that building takes up about three hundred and sixty thousand square feet. However, the trip generation associated with that building is much less than an equivalent office space. So overall, the newest preliminary A plan has decreased in total number of trips for parcel C quite significantly compared to the previous approval. I, I have, in, in the report, we indicated that a reduction of two hundred and seventy-eight trips during the AM peak hour and a reduction, reduction of two hundred and ninety-nine trips during the PM peak hour is the resultant change in, in trips from the preliminary A Fifth Amendment to now the Sixth Amendment. As indicated, the, the corporate suites, not only does it generate less traffic than the equivalent sized office complex, it also generates less parking requirement than a similar sized office space. Essentially, when we looked at all of the different intersections for the full build, which of course is going to be in the future, we had to estimate the traffic. And we had to estimate not only the traffic that we're generating, but also other developments that have come into the town more recently and then the growth of traffic. One thing I would like to note is when we did our traffic counts, they were post, post-COVID and they were somewhat lower or generally lower than the pre-COVID traffic data that has, was provided to us through other, other reports and through the NJ DOT and also previous studies that we did back in two thousand and thirteen. So what we did was we did make adjustments from the data that we got more recently and compared it to the old data. And in fact, our analysis is, we believe, quite conservative because this post-COVID traffic condition has definitely seen a reduction from these, the pre-COVID traffic conditions in, in many areas. So we feel we're very conservative. In fact, some of the traffic counts we got were about fifty percent or, or thirty percent less than pre-COVID. So we've, we've actually increased the traffic with this analysis that we, that we've done by a very large percentage.
You know, that you took information pre-COVID and you adjusted the numbers to make up for the reduction that was shown by your actual.
Right, exactly. We, we generally, we, we had to balance the traffic and we had to look at the way traffic is moving today and the way it moved earlier pre-COVID. And we actually decided that in most cases, we just use the pre-COVID numbers, even though they're not actually happening at this point. And, and you know, in the future, they may never quite get back to those pre-COVID, you know, volumes. So with that conservative analysis, we all, we reviewed five of those intersections. So it's Alexander Road with Canal Point Boulevard, which is to the north of the site. And then also Canal Point Boulevard with Carnegie Center Boulevard. Also Canal Point Boulevard with Meadow Road. And also Meadow Road with Carnegie Center Drive, which is on the other side of Route One. There is a big development going on over there. There's going to be changes over there. It's a potential roundabout. So we also looked at what impacts we might have as far out as the Meadow Road and, and Carnegie Center Road that's on the east side. So when we're looking at the entire site in the future, we had to project about twenty years out. So nobody knows exactly what's gonna happen twenty years from now. However, we estimated what's going to happen. And based on those estimates, we found that there is a couple of intersections that may require some mitigation, mostly in the form or generally in the form of traffic signal modifications as far as timing and some of the operation. So Alexander Road and Canal Point Boulevard is one of those intersections. We certainly will be adding some volumes along Canal Point Road, along the various driveways that are there. And as part of the potential mitigation in the future, now this is going to be looked at every single time we come in for site plan approval for any of the future buildings. So we did the same thing for the Quorman site and I'll get to that in a second. So we looked at this very broadly and, and looked at a potential future mitigation. We wanted to make sure that at this point in time, are we looking at doing widening? Are we looking at doing some other type of mitigation that can be done with traffic signal? You know, timing and operation. So we, we concluded that at the Alexander Road and Canal Point Boulevard intersection, that the northbound right turn, so that's the right turn that goes towards Route One and towards the Route One interchange. And then there's also the left turn that goes towards Princeton. So in order to mitigate this future condition, the left turn, we need to give them a left turn phase in the future, which is an arrow that, that would, would allow them to get a green light prior to the jug handle that's at Alexander Road, which comes south on Canal Point Boulevard. So that's one potential change and some timing to allow the right turns onto Alexander Road to go towards the Route One interchange. Now, at this moment in time, there is no level of service problem. The existing conditions, the no build conditions, we're not finding any significant delays. It's just in the future, there is a possibility that we may have to do some signal timing adjustments and some operational adjustments.
And that we'll become aware of when we're doing a study for some other project within it and they'll make the same analysis. And if the results change, then they both would that change at that time.
That's right. So, so we will and we, we have, you know, we, we have agreed to prepare traffic studies every single time a development comes in, similar to what we did here. We did, because we did change preliminary A, we said, well, let's do a study to make sure that what we're changing, in fact, doesn't have any significant impacts. And we also proved that what we're changing is less trips than the previously, previous approval. So now we have a very good baseline as to where we stand today. So what we did for Quorman was, we took all those existing traffic volumes and all we did was say, how much traffic is Quorman going to or the, the corporate suites site? How much traffic is that gonna add to the, to the roadway system? And let's analyze if there's anything that has to happen now, instead of just in, in, in the future. So, so for the.
Is that the subject of a different?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, yes. Absolutely. That, that study, which was part of the submission to the town, is the Traffic Impact Study, Proposed Carnegie Center West Building Eight Oh One, Quorman Corporate Suites, again revised May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. So, so that study, we analyzed all of the same intersections, except for, we just utilized the Quorman site trips. Now, the Quorman site has a total trip generation of one hundred and five vehicles in the AM peak hour and one hundred and six in the PM peak hour. Now, clearly, when Quorman is built, we have only the two access points. So we have the Route One access point and we have the Canal Point Boulevard access point. So all of the trips have to come in and out of those two driveways and then get distributed to the roadway system. So as part of that study, we analyzed that site specifically to those driveways and then spread them out to the roadway system that we also analyzed for the entire preliminary A. And we found that there was no issues with traffic. There was no need for mitigation. Of course, there were some slight increases in delay, but there was nothing that was out of the ordinary or anything that, you know, again, was, was requiring mitigation. Part of both studies, which was actually part of a condition of approval for our previous preliminary A, was to evaluate if a traffic signal was warranted at Canal Point Boulevard and Carnegie Center Boulevard, which is also the access to the Canal Point condominium complex. So we, we ran those, the signal warrant analysis with Quorman only. So that's basically today's conditions plus the, those trips that I just mentioned for the Quorman site. And it was definitely not warranted today or it won't be warranted once Quorman is built and occupied and running. When it came to the full preliminary A, meaning all of the develop, development there, the, the volumes were, I would, were not warranted, but they were very close. So again, as part of the approval process for any future development, we will be reviewing whether or not a traffic signal would be warranted there. Now, that may not be the direction that the town wants as far as to put in a signal, but we've been obligated to at least run the study and let you, let the town understand or, or know whether or not a signal is warranted every single time a new development comes in as part of this preliminary A.
Very briefly, follow up on the testimony that was presented by the last witness with regard to access and circulation, viewing it from the traffic engineer and then move on again briefly to parking and loading if there's additional.
Sure. I guess I'll, I'll go up to the exhibit, I, I believe specifically for building eight oh one or the Quorman site. Just to reiterate what Mr. Thomas indicated. This is for the board. So we have access off of Route One, we have access off of Canal Point Boulevard. Right now, the way this is proposed, the truck loading is towards the south of the building or the southwest side of the building. We do have exhibits in, in our documents for the site plans that show where those trucks will circulate and how they'll circulate throughout the road. Sorry. Uh, throughout the road, uh, sorry, throughout the site. But essentially, any trucks that are coming off of Route one will come down the spine road. And they will not go through the traffic circle. There's no reason for them to go through the traffic circle. We didn't want them to have to go through this traffic circle. So we actually designed this one uh aisle way that runs along the west side of the building to allow trucks to come in. And what they will do is they will make a right hand turn and they will back in to the loading zone. Now. Again, we don't anticipate there to be big tractor trailers deliveries here. It's mostly box trucks and smaller vehicles. However, if they need to. Uh, if they do need a tractor trailer, we have designed it for a tractor trailer to come in. Uh, and of course, a box truck would easily be able to make that or any other delivery vehicle, garbage truck, all the uh anticipated vehicles would be able to get into there. Uh, and of course, if they're coming uh from Canal Point Boulevard, uh, I believe they would do a similar situation. I think they would come in. Uh, and in fact, I don't think we actually showed that on our our plan. So I I would say they should all be coming in from Route one if they're a tractor trailer. And again, I don't believe that this this site really is going to require tractor trailer uh deliveries.
And if I can just ask you the same question that uh because all of the uh road you wrote that you just discussed, who one. Accommodates a tractor trailer, um, it would also accommodate in emergency vehicles and the circulation we showed would also provide. Circulation for emergency vehicles in that building.
Uh, yeah, that's correct. We actually have the uh emergency vehicle access, which is the shared. Uh, you know, pedestrian bicycle and of course for emergency vehicles to surround the building. The access point to that. At the driveway of Route one is designed for a uh fire fire truck, a West Windsor fire truck, to be able to make all movements in and out of that. As necessary and circulate around and of course, uh, enter the site also from uh Canal Point Boulevard.
Based upon your knowledge of how this um uh corporate suite will function, you go to test learning with regard to um. Three loading spaces um from your perspective, reviewing these types of uh applications and circulation and operation. Adequate, uh, even though the uh the possible or require a four.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And again, based on operations, based on what they have at their other facilities and other towns, uh, you know, they they know how their site works. They're they're gonna, they're certainly not gonna under design what's necessary for loading, right? Why would they want to do that to themselves? Doesn't.
Do you have signage for the truck deliveries, how they are going to maneuver around the site?
Uh, I believe that's going to be a a question for Mike Thomas. I don't, I did not prepare the truck delivery signage. Is there some signage shown? That identifies where the truck delivery is? And I'm sure operations will will identify exactly how they do that uh with their vendors. So there is going to be another witness that comes up that can discuss that.
Well, are you planning for UPS and Amazon and Amazon Prime and all of those to be going through this uh? Through this uh.
Yes, that is. Well, not necessarily through there. Again, we have another uh ex uh person who's going to testify about the operations of of the deliveries and the day to day operations. Of of the actual facility itself.
Finally, you testified with regards to the fact that this will this proposal's will generate less um demand for parking. Um, and you heard the testimony that the uh ordinance would require two hundred eighty five parking spaces based on this use and we're providing. Four hundred and forty four. Um, and is that appropriate for uh based on your knowledge of the project? Is that necessary to satisfy this project?
Yeah, I I and I think it was explained a little earlier. This, again, this is not a typical hotel style. Um, you know, operation, right? This is, this operates a little bit more like an apartment. So if you look um at something similar to an apartment. Trip uh parking generation that and we did compare that and we did go through that in the TRC meetings. Uh, if if you look at an apartment uh parking generation, I believe the number was, and I think I had it about four hundred and eighty eight spaces. I believe is what ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they have a handbook that. Uh, has studies on parking demand, just like they do trip generation. And in there, they have many studies on apartment complex and it's based on the number of units. So when you look at a two hundred and seventy unit apartment complex. It actually has a parking demand eighty fifth percentile, which is a was a typical design standard for parking of about four hundred and eighty eight. Whereas here we have about four hundred and forty four. So it's actually a little lower than, let's just say, a uh the demand of an apartment complex. But again. Um, so you know, certainly that that supports needing more parking than what a typical hotel would be, considering the operation of this facility. Is going to operate much more like an apartment complex.
Finally, uh, we're going to try to clarify. Um, I believe that the number of parking spaces that are. Required for uh preliminary A um is uh four thousand one hundred and twenty nine spaces, if that be. Um, and um, we are proposing four thousand four hundred and forty one spaces. So again, um, you have heard the testimony with regard to the changes that were made, uh, given the. The uh type of uses that are proposed um in the amended uh plan. If that inappropriate uh numbers are justified to be asked to exceed what's required by the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of twofold. If you look at it, uh, in my opinion, anyway, the 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 total surplus. Uh, and and forgive me if the numbers aren't absolutely, you know, uh, perfect, but it's about three hundred and ten. So that's the uh four thousand four hundred and forty one. That's proposed out of the four thousand one hundred and twenty nine that's per the ordinance. Uh, of those spaces, the Corman site itself. Uh, has a hundred and fifty nine surplus, right, which we've we've identified is what's necessary for it. It's much more in line with the type of operation. Uh, more like an apartment complex. So out of the three hundred and twelve for all of preliminary A, the Corman site is using a hundred and fifty nine of those. So that leaves a hundred and fifty three extra spaces that we're really looking for for the remainder of preliminary A. And we're talking out of about almost four thousand spaces. So really, we're only asking for um about a hundred and fifty additional spaces out of. Almost four thousand. So it's a very small percentage increase, but it's what the, it's really what the market is asking for and we we, you know, the. Um, Boston Properties really wants to make sure that their clientele, who is asking for parking, they can get the clientele that they want here. So they just. Whatever we can kind of fit on this uh site plan, still less than previously preliminary A. Uh, just remember, we, you know, you've heard that testimony. This is less than the previous preliminary A in many, in many ways. So we're just asking for that relief tonight.
Can we just clarify? I apologize. Apparently, we had an incorrect number. So can we just correct what Mike had testified to? I had that he had the wrong number. Can you just explain what the requirement is under the ordinance for parking? Just reiterate that and what we're proposing. The difference seems close, but I just want the right numbers in the record.
Uh, the requirement is four thousand six hundred and ninety six spaces and then the proposed, what we have in the current preliminary A is five thousand seventeen.
I I think roughly, I think roughly for something. Okay, so so it was three hundred and twenty one is the difference. Uh, the calculation I had was three hundred and twelve. So. Uh, so about nine different. However, the percentage is actually less now because just as as Mike indicated. I had four at about four thousand. It's really at about four thousand five hundred. So we're talking about the percentage of additional parking that we're looking for. Is actually smaller. Uh, it's it's probably below three percent more parking than what's um required by the ordinance.
That's all I have for this witness.
Bruce, uh, NJ DOT and US Route one. Do you have knowledge of what NJ DOT wants to do with this section of of Route one?
I am not aware of anything at this moment. I don't know if you you are or the board is specific.
Uh, so I and and Sam, you might need to jump in here at some point. Um, do do we have any knowledge of? Uh, uh, in particular, the Carnegie Center Boulevard intersection at US Route one. Um, is it in the master plan of US Route one to eliminate the traffic lights of that intersection?
It's in our circulation plan element, but the state doesn't have any.
You swear a firm testimony about to give we the truth and has been the truth.
I do. Um, it's in our circulation plan element for a grade separated over change but uh interchange, but.
Grade separate.
The state doesn't have any plans to do anything. It's not in their budget. The only work that I understand that they plan on doing. Is from the Dinkie Bridge up to the Millstone River, where they're going to shift to center line or Route one twenty feet to the west. Um, uh, where Washington uh Road crosses Route one. That's the only work that's planned in the future on on Route one.
So it's not like, it's not like it would be a a alternate plan. Uh, if they do not, if they did not do a great separated interchange at at uh Carnegie Center Boulevard and US Route one, just to. Totally eliminate it and encourage people to either use Meadow or Alexander to access.
I've never seen any plans where it would be eliminated.
Okay, okay. Never mind. Guys, I was worried if if that was going to be eliminated. As an access, whereas then all your traffic numbers for a northbound vehicle would have to. Come off.
Be redistributed, right, right.
And be redistributed.
Yes.
Okay. But it sounds like that's a moot point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody. Okay, um, next next witness, please.
Great, thank you.
Are ready to move on. We have another representative of um Corman, who will provide you some more information about what's proposed. At the site physically and in terms of um services that are provided in. We're providing a uh a packet with.
Uh, there's fourteen images.
Fourteen images on it. If we could, I think, um, are we up to a four?
Thank you. Think so, yeah.
All right, so Avery, can you just like identify what it is and then maybe we can insert the individual pages just.
No, the we'll we'll mark this a a three uh packet of fourteen uh pictures. And um corresponding to. Um, well, I I guess there's fourteen, right? So how about it? Your your exhibits or we mark them. Jerry, A three dash one or something or point one or how anyone do this? Yeah, I think, yeah, we we can certainly do the do it that way or just uh for the record. Um, as the witness go through, it just can be referred to what page. Or the pages are not numbered though. Um, yeah, let's mark them uh A three uh dash one uh dash two, et cetera, et cetera.
And what your position entails of the company and then.
Sure, uh, my name is Jeffrey Brown with Corman Communities. I'm on the investment, sorry. My name is Jeffrey Brown with Corman Communities. I'm on the investment and development team for Corman. Um, and we're involved with Scott Relic, who previously testified in all new development and investments um that Corman Communities makes. I was just going to start by saying there's fourteen images in front of you. Um, the first five are proposed renderings for the AV project uh here in Westminster Township. The nine preceding those are images of recently completed projects in the AV portfolio. Just wanted to put that out there. We also have larger boards. Um, I believe the third image in that packet is up on the uh easel right now, but we have larger of all of them as well. If anyone. Uh, would like to see any of those put up.
So why don't you start by describing, uh, Scott had spoken about how this is a um. You want me to review services? Can you please provide the board with some information about what's proposed here in terms of the mix of unit? And also the amenities that are provided and the services.
Sure, um, this approximately three hundred and sixty thousand square foot project includes a mix of studios, um, one bedroom and two bedroom suites, as was.
Get a little closer to the mic.
Sure. This three hundred and sixty thousand square foot project includes a mix of studio, one bedroom and two bedroom suites, as was previously discussed. With an average size of approximately a thousand square feet. Many suites include built in desks or small office spaces we discussed earlier uh for clients to work remotely. Suites generally include uh luxury hard surface flooring and kitchens, living and dining areas, uh carpet and bedrooms. And full kitchens generally contain uh stainless steel appliances, quartz countertops, tile backsplashes and under cabinet lighting. Suites contain full size washers and dryers and select units will feature either balconies or private outdoor spaces as well. Plans common areas, uh, which we've spoken about in the past, include a state of the art fitness center, various lounge spaces, a theater or symposium room. Business center, various conference rooms seating anywhere from two to fourteen guests, a library lounge, co working space. Uh, exclusively for client's use, a golf simulator and gaming area and bicycle storage. Other common areas um are generally outdoor spaces, which include a resort style pool with sun deck, two courtyards with grilling stations, fire pits. And outdoor lounge, and finally, a rooftop gathering space on the fourth floor.
You said there'd be a pool with a sun deck?
I'm sorry?
You said there'd be a pool?
Yes, that we have pool in the courtyard of the building.
In the courtyard.
To hit on a a point that came up earlier, um, in the previous testimony from the traffic engineer about the loading, um, we can refer. Back to the original drawing.
Microphone?
This exhibit A two, there are two loading areas, as were previously discussed. The first is on the southwest corner of the building. That's more for uh box truck deliveries, things like that that happen generally, one maybe two times a day at max, as we've seen throughout the rest of the portfolio. The second that you referenced before is this loading area here, which is directly to the west of the building. That's more for the typical daily deliveries. That includes FedEx. UPS, Amazon, things like that. They have direct access from a sidewalk into the side of the building. Will it be able to uh buzz in, buzz to our front desk? That will allow them access to a private space that they will have access to just one area in the building where they drop off all of those kind of daily packages. Which then our team comes in and attends it. Other than that, uh, most guests, uh, you know, clients will be arriving through the front door of the building, uh, with a secondary access point to the west that Mike Thomas raised before. With an outdoor courtyard on the northwest corner of the building.
You said repeatedly that the parking spaces, I guess I need this too, that the um, the parking calculation that we are using. Which exceeds what's required um by the municipal ordinance is based upon our experience um for other similar facilities. Can you just explain how we calculate that?
Sure, throughout the AV portfolio, we generally look at the number of bedrooms in a suite uh in a corporate suite facility. So we're including three hundred and three indoor spaces exclusively for client's use, along with a hundred and forty one surface spaces. This represents one space per bedroom, which is four hundred and four total bedrooms at this facility, plus forty additional spaces for AV team members. Visitors and various corporate functions that happen at the at the facility. Uh, these counts are in line with all of our recent developments throughout the portfolio, as well as all four of our properties in New Jersey.
Um, and you referred to um um that there are relatively small conference areas. Uh, you referred to a a symposium or theater um area. These are made available to corporate. The court, the corporate clientele, is that correct?
Correct. That's exclusive for um corporate clientele use, those that are living or staying in the building, as well as those who are users of the building. For instance, a tenant within Boston Properties Carnegie Center would have the ability to come and use this space free of charge.
And so the um calculation based on your experience of other locations, uh, because of the nature of who's there during the day and who isn't. And the difference between that and office use, that this provides adequate parking for um whoever may be using any of these. Small conference or or uh seating areas or or whatever uh business arrangements are that being conducted during the day.
Yeah, we found this is, this is an ideal mix of parking spaces for this number of students.
Well, um, people uh who want to travel to most of the Boston properties, which are on the other side of Route one. Is there going to be provided any kind of jitney or any other kind of service? Or are they going to have to all have a car in order to do that?
Uh, generally, corporate users use their own vehicle to get to and from the facility. Generally, corporate users use their own vehicle to get to and from the facility. In some instances, we provided a service of sorts that'll be analyzed by our operations team when we open. But we have done that in the past.
So just, let's reiterate that the majority of, based on Scott's testimony, the focus of the business or the majority of the users are in fact corporate, correct?
That's correct.
And the. That's all we were going to provide at this time unless the board has any questions. And we'll move over to the next witness. We'll be our architect will show you the physical layout of the corporate suites.
Do you have any questions? Let's move on.
These were previously submitted.
Ryan, could you please reintroduce yourself to the board? Identify with whom you're associated and provide the board with your qualifications, including any licenses that you hold in the state of New Jersey?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ryan Bruce. Again, I'm with Bernard in Architecture, the architect of record for the project. I am a licensed architect in New Jersey. I have over 25 years of experience practicing architecture in multiple jurisdictions, including New Jersey. And CARB, I have an active NCARB certificate and I'm also a lead accredited professional.
All right, thank you. And you were part of the team that did the design for the proposed West Windsor.
Correct.
Okay. And can you describe for the board what we are proposing for the building?
Sure. So I think there's a couple of design goals we had. I know on the TRC's mentioned basically three previous documents that have been issued. One being the 2020 land use plan, the other being the West Windsor zoning code, which is a given. And then the third is the Carnegie Center West Design Initiatives that were set out a while ago to create some continuity at this campus. So we followed those. Essentially, the gist of the, of those and the largest design goal we tried to achieve was to fit into a campus, but allow for some flexibility and some creativity with the building, which we believe we've done here. So I'll talk a little bit. You've already heard testimony from Mr. Thomas, Mr. Richardi, about the massing of the building, building heights. This is a four-story building, 58 feet tall. Other buildings on this campus range from three to five stories, from 47 feet all the way up to 70 feet. It's in between 701, excuse me, building 704 and building, I'm sorry, building 701 and building 804. A little bit further to the west is 902. So we feel like the building height fits within there. I do want to. I guess what hasn't been talked about yet, and I just want to clarify is we did do some studies to make sure that the, any rooftop mechanical equipment on the roof is out of sight of anybody outside of the building. You'll see on the sheet, SK001, towards the end of the package. We've done, we've done studies from different locations around the site and the angles of the building, just to make sure that none of those, none of the equipment on the roof is going to be seen. You'll also see on the roof plan. It's a sheet number A11. Just to follow through with that, there's a no-fly zone around the perimeter of the building where equipment will not be placed so as to allow the site not to be seen.
A question on the A111. It looks like you've got the, is that an open trowel for the water to come through? You have the roof drain system on it?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
There's a roof drain system on A111. So is that open or is that a pipe or what is that?
Oh, that's pipe. Those would be roof drains going through the building and out.
So is that under the roof or on top of the roof or?
On top. Are you talking about the square with the cross and the circle?
Roof drain and crooked typical, there's a whole drain system that goes all the way around, which is sort of like a trowel.
Right, so it's all internal. This is a flat roof essentially with internal drains that would run down and out through the basement.
And the little rectangles with the little three, little four squares in them?
Right, so those are indicating the condensing units for the air handling units and the units.
Because they're all, so is it actually possible to put solar on this roof? Because it looks like there's a lot of stuff there.
It's, that's a very good question. I think to the earlier comment about, you know, it may be more efficient, not only cost-effective, but just from a, you know, the ability to achieve energy savings. It's probably a more efficient system on this site to do it on, on surface parking, similar to what's done on the.
So it looks like this roof isn't ready for solar. It's, it's got a lot of stuff on it right now.
Exactly, that's true.
Plus, I think you said there's going to be a play area or something also up there, so.
So there is a section, again, Greg Richardi of Boston Properties, we did testify earlier. The conduit will be in place, so depending upon, they haven't done an in-depth analysis as to the complete feasibility for it, but to the extent technology changes around how those panels are mounted or how they can be configured, the electrical connection points to implement solar will be on the building.
So you'll put on the building and then it would have to probably be raised panels or something on it?
It could be on a raised panel. Again, the technology may exist. It may change. It could, it could end up being like a floor tile, like you see different types of solar shingles now. There could be different things that come online that could be done, but it will be capable of having solar because the conduit will be in place.
Okay, I was, I was just looking at the design. There's a lot of stuff going up.
Absolutely.
There that you couldn't just put the panels on top of, so.
For sure.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, I will. Again, I think from a massing standpoint, so I'll move on to materials. In your package, there are flat elevations. Are the renderings still up here? A little bit of both here, but.
That's the third, that's the third sheet, sheet A201. Oh, I'm sorry, the rendering. Rendering is the third sheet in the package.
And then the elevations, colored elevations with all the materials called out are A201 in your architectural package. Be after your floor plans. So we are proposing similar materials to the surrounding buildings on this campus. We're talking about brick, metal panel, cementitious panels, as well as curtain wall. What you'll find is fairly common, all the buildings around this campus are multi-story curtain wall systems. As evidence, what's going on in 510 right now, it's being reskinned with a very similar architectural language, I'll call it. So we are presenting that at our main entrance. We have a curtain wall system that spans four stories, indicating the main entrance to this building. I think you'll also see along the elevation along Route 1. Very large windows along the, especially at the corner, the northeast corner. Sorry, I'm pointing to the wrong elevation, but up here, elevation 1, east elevation is the one facing Route 1. A lot of open windows where you'll see activity and something going on as you, as you drive down Route 1. The other renderings. Do you want to show one other? I'll show this one. I believe this is the first rendering. Yep, page one. So this is the view from Route 1. As you're coming down, you'll see the berm in the front, as well as the architectural elements. You also see the aluminum cornice feature that we have on two of the corners and the main entrance to the building. So I believe one of the reference in the 2020 land use plan was to evidence materials that are, show a high level of investment. These are by all means a high level of investment. They're not cheap, inexpensive materials for sure. And again, they relate to not only building 701 and 804, but a number of the other buildings on this campus. Excuse me. So that's what I have on materials. I think the program has been talked about a little bit. I do have floor plans. I don't know that I need to walk through them unless there are specific questions on some of the program elements inside the building.
I'm really sorry I have to ask you this question about the floor plans, but we've been burned in a way, but I need to ask this question. Do all the bedrooms have windows?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want that assurance.
Okay. I didn't know we had that option.
I like your response. I like your response.
We don't think, we don't think you do, but that's, comes out of a different.
I've never designed a bedroom without a window.
That's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear.
$6,000 a month, you better have a window.
Right, exactly.
Do the windows open?
Are they, are they, yeah, Michael asked, do they open? Are they?
Yes, we'll be using operable windows for fresh ventilation. Yep. And a number of them have, actually have balconies, as you can see, with not only windows but doors. Yeah, that's a good question. That was, I think, one of the design goals of the Carnegie Center West Design Initiatives is to create a socially and environmentally positive building here. I think, I don't think we need to talk about how mixing the uses on this site is, has infinite advantages from a social and environmental standpoint, keeping people off the road, getting people who work in all these buildings as close as possible to the buildings. Some of them can even walk if they are so inclined. Some of the specific things, we talked about EV. Day one, there'll be at least 16 EV charging stations in the building. And we are planning on putting in infrastructure for at least twice that many in the future. Based on negotiations with the utility, maybe even more. Again, we want to future-proof the building, not only from a PV standpoint, but from an EV standpoint.
In terms of the charging stations, will they be designed so they can service two vehicles at the same time?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so you'll see them paired up in the parking plan there, the one unit in between. We talked about PV a little bit. Again, the electrical rooms are oversized for any future inverter equipment that might need to go in there. Well, conduits that run in and out of that room. If we do end up with a PV system that's out on, on the parking area versus on the roof. And then we do have the vertical chases where we can always serve the roof if we need to.
This is a pretty part of the discussion, but there was this one that there will not be any dumpsters outside. So all of the revenues have been appropriately sized to accommodate what's anticipated.
Correct. There's two sets, two pairs of chutes, trash and recycling. There's two large internal trash rooms. One's about 500 square feet, the other one's about 600 square feet. You can see we even laid out the trash, trash containers that'll be in those rooms. Based on past AV projects and our experience, these rooms are sufficient to keep all the trash inside the building.
So does this, are there any service in this hotel? I mean, does somebody come in and change the sheets once a week or do towels? Or is that, is this basically more apartment like?
Sure. I'll take that again. Jeff Brown with Corman Communities. Depends on the resident's, you know, term of their, of their stay. But generally, housekeeping is provided weekly for resident, for clients of the building. And that includes our in-house team. That is not an outsourced role, but it's our team members who go into the suites and perform, you know, basic cleaning, changing of linens, towels, all that sort of stuff.
That's what we have on direct for our architect, unless you have additional questions. As we are ready to be called.
Nope. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Let's mark this as exhibit A4.
John, could you just describe what is that we're marking A4?
Sure. A4 is going to take you full circle back to where we started. These are views of the property as it presently exists. In fact, views of the property as they existed today. These are drone shots of the property, basically in real time.
You found Google on that entity, correct?
That Google's not today, but the ones by John McDonough Associates are.
Okay, so these are prepared by you or?
Yes.
Okay, John, could you just reintroduce yourself to the board and provide your credentials so that we can qualify you as an expert in the field of planning?
Hi again, everyone. John McDonough. I'm the project planner, licensed in professional planning here in the state of New Jersey, current and in good standing. Also the national certification under AICP as well, also current and in good standing. I'm a landscape architect. If we need to go there too.
And you've been accepted by this board as an expert in the field of planning, is that correct?
Yes.
We would ask the board to accept it as an expert in the field of planning.
So qualified.
Thank you so much. Okay, why don't you start with your discussion about the project and then you can go through the variances that you heard testimony regarding the suite.
We'll take it in two parts. This is really a look at the integration of the site with the surrounding land use context. We'll take it in two parts. This is really a look at the integration of the site with the surrounding land use context. That's the essence of these photographs here in A4, is to show that this is a vacant piece of property. You have excellent predicate of testimony from my planning conclusions that this is a good fit for the campus as it presently exists now, a vacant piece of land, a spacious piece of land just sitting there, ripe for development and an excellent fit with the campus as a whole. You've got testimony from Greg, from Jeff, from Scott, from Mike, from Bruce, from Ryan, all on both the operational and the technical side, that this will nicely integrate with the site. It will flow, function and operate safely and efficiently, and certainly complement the land use that is around it now, which is this massive corporate park. We know it's just common sense that corporate suites are a logical extension and a logical fit within a corporate park. It complements the uses that are there. I think your own master plan pinpoints exactly why this application is a is a good application. And this is what your 2020 master plan says about the ROM1 district. Presently, a significant portion of the ROM1 district is developed with the Carnegie Center office development. Therefore, it is the intent of this land use category to recognize the existing development pattern of this district where additional development is proposed. It should be done so in a manner which promotes the attractive unified design of the area, while also promoting a high quality level of investment. No doubt, this is going to be a substantial investment in the center, certainly going to add value and quality. With value and quality, not only comes a highly attractive building, but also a higher level of tenancy being attracted here as well to take advantage of that amenity. So right on point with your master plan, right on point with the integration from a physical planning standpoint, with a physical characteristic of the surrounding land use context, and essentially right on point with your master plan and, I mean, your zone plan. If we take a look at the ROM1 zone district, we're dealing with a use here that's permitted. We're dealing with a form of development that is in substantial compliance with all of your bulk regulations within that ROM1 zone district, the height of the building, the coverage of the building. You have already granted relief for the overall lot coverage, which is not being exceeded here. The setbacks on all sides, but for one minor relief related to the setback from Route One, and we'll get that to that in a sec. The overall lot size, the lot dimensions all comply. So the, both the form of development and the use that's proposed here are in substantial compliance with that ROM1 zone district. With that comes a number of community benefits associated with this application. And before we look at the relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on, we always consider the application as a whole and whether it does promote positive community impacts. Certainly here, we're going to see the promotion of the general welfare with a permitted use that will complement the center as a whole. And as I said, corporate suites are a perfect fit within a corporate campus, which is exactly what the applicant is doing here. And high quality amenity will attract high quality tenants. That all goes towards Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Also, Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. This is a different land use compared to anything else that's on the campus now. So it certainly goes towards that planning goal to provide for a diversity of land uses, all complementing each other in a nice synergic matter here. You heard through Greg's testimony that this is going to be a nice transitional location, transitional land use on a transitional lot between the residences that we see to the west of the residential land use, transitioning to the non-residential land use to the to the east. And here we are in phase three of the corporate center, where we've got 13 other non-residential buildings planned or constructed. Again, very nice integration and a transitional use on what is really a transitional lot. Also, we're looking at the advancement of Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. You've got those images fresh on the on the panels now, that this is going to be a beautiful premium building that is certainly going to add quality to the area. Purpose M, the planning goal for efficient use of land, taking a site that is prime for redevelopment and repurposing it and filling that void in the center that's there now. Lastly, we've got the promotion of economic development. This is a economic development oriented zone district. It's one of the core pillars of your master plan and of this particular aspect of the community. This is not only going to provide a service use, but it is also going to spark economic development with direct jobs that would be associated with this facility. Also indirect jobs, the vendors, the suppliers, that will all benefit, as you just heard, from the operational aspects of of this facility. And then, of course, we've got induced jobs as well, which are the jobs that are going to be sparked by the clients that come to this facility, spending money locally and supporting those local businesses, which creates that demand for induced jobs as well. So a nice ripple effect of positives that go beyond the boundaries of of this development as well and infuse into the community. On the negative side, the relief again that the applicant is seeking here, relatively minor, and you've got good predicate of both technical and operational evidence that would support my planning conclusion, that the relief related to the building setback, and there are two interrelated reliefs here. 125 foot is the ordinary requirement. And if you look at the master plan for the development, there's a nice green band around the property that this particular building is going to be situated consistent with what we see with the other buildings as well. There's an analytical or technical requirement that this building be set further back. You have a requirement in your ordinance that for every foot of building height over 45 feet, there should be an additional three-foot setback, which actually would trigger a setback here of 164 feet. The building wall is going to be at 125 feet, which is consistent with, again, the other buildings in the area, certainly not going to overpower this portion of the center, but actually create a nice focal point. And we think that somewhat of an imbalance, if you will, a variety of of building types and forms creates visual interest as opposed to a uniform, monotonous development. So it certainly is going to create a centerpiece for this cluster of the planned development. Again, based on that, there's also going to be a cornice element that's going to extend another four feet beyond the building face, so that'll be at 122 feet versus the 164 feet. Based on all the testimony on the record, based on all the visual evidence on the record, that impact will not be substantially adverse and certainly will not outweigh all of those benefits that I just recited for the board. That's the essence of the C2 test here, that the benefits of the application as a whole under the pull-in case would substantially outweigh any detriment. So I believe in terms of the relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on, in terms of the C variance, that is justifiable under the the framework of the law that we planners operate with. Lastly, and I'm not going to hit each one of the 20 or so design exceptions, they've been well-vetted before the board. Essentially, there's five buckets here, signage-related. You've heard a lot of testimony about how the signage package is going to integrate with the package as a whole and unify the campus, which is one of the core elements of the master plan. Also, a bucket of relief related to the parking. Again, you have Bruce's testimony that the supply here is appropriate, just a couple percentages points above what the ordinance maximum would be. So not a substantial departure from the zone plan in terms of the overall general development plan or GDP. And then with respect to the site itself, Building 801, 444 versus 285. That's to deal with those fluctuations in demand and have that capacity there to accommodate if there's extra demand for the amenities or the meeting space or whatnot. You've got good operational testimony in that regard as well. So this will provide a supply that will meet for that fluctuation and not trigger any additional coverage relief. So that's important as well. Again, related to parking, we've heard about the loading, we've heard about the hair pinstriping, which is perfectly reasonable and appropriate. Third bucket relates to the landscaping, the parking lot module of 21 versus 20 is de minimis. The tree count is also reasonable and appropriate because of that trigger based on the the parking structure. And then lastly, we've got the linear basins, the Section 35 relief, whether it's actually a variance or relief. I'm sure the language in the resolution can cover it, but the board can certainly take the position that that relief is appropriate as well, given the fact that that accessway will be adequate to accommodate emergency vehicles, which is really the essence of Section 36, that substantiates Section 35 under the law. I think I fit everything, signage, parking, landscape, design-related in Section 35. There were a couple of lighting-related design exceptions as well. They were all covered in the interest of safety and the fact that it relates to a center as a whole. With that, I'll absorb all the testimony on the record in terms of framing my planning conclusions. And with that, I would say this applicant has certainly exceeded its burden here in terms of meeting the statutory criteria, and approval is certainly wanted.
One last point, you did indicate that the use itself is permitted and also under the definition of the permitted use, the type of facility that we're providing is also contemplated, is that correct?
Yes, no specificity on duration of stay or anything like that, no limitation, I should say.
And that is what we have for the direct for our plan for our planning.
Thank you.
Yeah, is this property subject to the hotel tax? Yes.
Rob, go ahead.
Hold on, I'm holding the mic in my hand this time, okay?
Greg Richardi from Boston Properties, yes, it is subject to the hotel tax.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, you have a question?
Yeah, John, I think you're the right person to ask this question, but maybe Mike is as well. I'm just curious to your opinion, given your wide gaze in the land use world. It's a US highway, it's a beautiful complex and structure. There's no parking along the eastern wall in front. What's your thoughts on a 10-foot berm? I know what the purpose is, but what's your thoughts on that? And do other townships require something like that in circumstances like this?
Well, again, I think in the interest of continuity with the center as a whole, it's it's going to be an effective blend of that which is around it.
When I look at this property and I look at what we created here, I think this berm actually does the service.
By hiding it, by hiding it.
Yeah, I mean, your site is actually. He jumps.
Just, just stay there.
I might as well. So the part of the purpose of the berm, in addition, as we did it for NRG, and it actually did improve some of the visuals in terms of the users of the actual building. So it will provide some screening from the Corman side of things to Route One. And then in addition, it also creates a more pleasant experience using that walking trail along, because you're not going to have as much of the attenuation from noise of Route One or other things, potentially safety in terms of creating some some separation from, you know, the road and that walking area. I just think it will improve. Trust me, if we didn't have to do it, we'd save a ton of money. But I do think it serves some purposes, again, for the benefit of the Corman customer for, similar to how it does with NRG, and then also with respect to screening off that walking trail to make it a more pleasant experience.
Right, that's actually.
Anybody else? Okay. So with that, I guess we're going to turn it over to our professionals.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the only thing, there's a comment in the Burgess Report about the Affordable Housing Development Fee, and that's that's required by law. So, so stipulate.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I wonder if to if to facilitate things, as our professionals go through it, they can just point out the recommendations that they're making that they think should be imposed as a condition, and we can get the reaction of the applicant at that time. I don't, I don't think we need a more detailed review of our reports on that. Maybe the chair, the chair is not chair that few.
That's a great idea, Jerry. Okay. So let's hear from our professionals. Stephen, you wanna, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I think the only provision in your memo which warrants a condition, and as John McDonough indicated, it's a matter of state law anyway, is the one with respect to the Affordable Housing Fee. I don't think there are any other recommendations in there. Would you agree? Would you agree?
Yes, I would say that Mr. McDonough covered all the issues that were spelled out in our July 19 memo, yes.
Great. John Taylor, do you want to go? With yours?
So our memo is dated July 19, 2022. We have a number of items listed as requiring conditions. I guess, in the interest of brevity, perhaps, does the applicant have any issues with any of the items we've identified as as requiring conditions?
No, we don't. Previously, when we spoke to Mr. Guzik with regard to some of the stormwater-related issues, we were still waiting for technical comment reviews from NJTP. So we wanted to receive those comments first before making any, I'll call it, additional stormwater management changes. We're still waiting on those comments.
So Jerry, that would be a condition of when they receive back their your information.
In what section would that relate to, John, or Francis's memo?
4.0 Stormwater Management.
Section, section four.
Okay.
Yeah, it's also on page four of seven, item 202, under the site plan items, talks about DEP and wet and wetlands specifically.
Yeah. So that's certainly going to be necessary. And then for 4.01, basically you're going to comply with the township ordinance, except as otherwise directed by DEPs, a fair way of putting it?
Yes.
I can't hear anything, I'm sorry.
I said for 4.01, what we'll phrase it is the applicant will comply with all the township stormwater management standards, except as otherwise directed by DEP.
That's correct. And then items 4.02 through 4.04 are also items that we indicated should be made as conditions.
Right.
Which I think the applicant is fine with.
On 2.03 with the swap-out, I think there was some mention that you're currently using that area now. And if you were to, in the future, take the bank parking, that we would, you would have to come back with a whole new stormwater plan. So shouldn't there be some kind of condition put like that for that?
So what Mr. Guzik recommended that we do to handle that issue was to essentially draw on the preliminary A sort of outline, if you will, what the existing, or I should say, what the proposed detention basins look like right now, sort of like dashed, if that makes sense. And then at the same time, also show where the bank parking is. And we included a note on the plan as well, sort of clarifying the two that we would need to come back in again for for reapproval if those detention basins were going to be removed.
So can we put that in a condition, so that's outlined like that?
Yeah, and we can include it specifically in the resolution. Yeah, and it'll be shown on the, on the plans for resolution compliance that we show.
I'm sorry.
Coming back to the board or would that be coming back to engineering at that point?
No, resolution compliance plans would would only go to the staff. Oh yeah, if they have to redo the stormwater, they have to come back to the board.
Okay, so if they do have to, actually, if they, if they get to the point where they use the bank parking, they will have to bring a plan back to the board.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, in that respect, the bank parking is not necessarily traditional bank parking where you have a right to build that.
But you still want the bank parking in in here at this point as bank parking?
Yes.
All right, but when you bring it back, you'll have to satisfy.
Right, and whatever the requirements are at that point.
So they'll be whatever they are at that point. Jerry, I'll put that as a condition?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
Uh, yeah, there are items under lighting that are listed as conditions, but I believe the applicant or recommended to be conditions. I believe the applicants agreed to those. Including adding a note to the plans that the applicant will work with staff to determine what lights, if any, need house side shields, which is item six point oh six. Item six point oh five, they'll work with staff to determine which lights can be turned turned off or dimmed overnight. That's one of the advantages. I I think the applicant's engineer correctly pointed out that with the LED lights, you can actually dim LED lights. You can have a different different amount of light intensity for different times of the day even, which is one benefit compared to an incandescent light where that's challenging to do.
And as a side note, on the east side of Carnegie Center, that system is already in place.
Okay, so for six point oh five then, in terms of the diminution of the lights, that's that should be, the plan should be subject to staff approval.
Yes.
Okay, and then on the bank parking, what we've always done is to the extent that the app, in addition to what we've talked about, to the extent that the applicant wants to install the parking in the bank parking spaces, they have to get basically the concurrence of the staff. And conversely, if the staff wants it, the bank parking to be installed, they can require that.
Right.
Anything else, John?
Yeah, that's in this case, that's not that's not actually correct, Jerry. The in this case, the stormwater management isn't designed for it, so that design would have to be done.
Okay, so the staff can't require it. Well.
The staff can't require it and the applicant can't just build it.
Right.
Stormwater approval for that.
Right.
And that may or may not, that stormwater management design may or may not trigger a requirement to come back to the board, depending on whether it can be administratively approved or not. Which would depend on how much impact it would have on the site and adjoining properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would basically, it it wouldn't come into play until we came in on an application most likely with respect to building seven oh two, which that parking would serve. And as part of that exercise, because we would be modifying the approved stormwater management system for this project, we would have to provide some form of an alternative to bring that parking online if we needed it. Basically, it's the last parking we would ever have to build for Carnegie Center West. But we didn't want to have to recreate the history when we came back here in the future if we got rid of it now. We want to say, hey, look, this was part of this. And in the future, we may want to bring it online, but recognizing that we will have to deal with whatever the law is at that time. So I believe what I believe what the resolution probably needs to show is that the applicant wants to maintain the bank parking shown on their plans, but they don't they don't have sufficient design done at this point to actually act on the on the bank parking, either for us to require it or for them to build it without coming back to the board.
Right.
But they anticipate that they would come back to the board for that.
Yeah, so with the way I'm going to phrase the condition, it's bank parking can be installed only with planning board approval. And with such modifications, a stormwater management plan as are necessary. That sound okay with John?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Stormwater management would have to adhere to the law at that time.
Sure.
Because sometimes there's arguments on that.
Well, I right, the the action of this board at this time doesn't doesn't grandfather the stormwater management rules because those are are from DEP, not from us. Well, they're from us and from DEP.
Okay, John, anything else?
Well, just to underscore in the lighting comments, it's the applicant's given a great deal of testimony tonight about the lighting issues. There are several design waivers that are requested and they're really subject to whether the board believes that they've received enough testimony to accept those waivers, which based on as long as the conditions get put in the resolution, I would recommend that they've met the standard for that. And item seven oh two, really, everything under the general needs to be a condition. But they're standard conditions that we have in practically every application.
It's okay with that?
Yeah. And I don't think we specifically talked about the subdivision comments. There was a subdivision. There was a review memo by our land surveyor consultant. Yes, we're correct. And those would also be, compliance with that would also be conditions.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, John?
Sure, it's our item. Under item one subdivision, it's our item one point oh two, technical comments from the land surveyor reviewer. Geo.
Yeah, just as a side note, TNM during our last submission, we addressed practically all those comments. So we did, we did address some of the submission.
What are we actually saying about four oh two and four oh three? Are we saying we're waiting for DEP or what? Where does that leave us?
So four oh two and four oh three, excuse me, West Wintzer doesn't have a mitigation plan, so the applicant's agreeing basically to either get DEP to waive those requirements or or construct the design the project so that those things aren't issues.
So we're getting a choice there at this point?
Well, it's the applicant has the choice. They can either redesign the project to not
Okay.
Issues or they can get a waiver from DEP. If DEP gives them a waiver, then we don't have to provide mitigation. Or potentially that the applicant and any applicant could provide their own mitigation.
Just to clarify again, this was the issue that discussed with Francis during the the last TRC meeting, TRC number four, and we're waiting for technical review comments back from DEP for stormwater management. We still have yet to receive that.
John, if you could go back to one point oh one A, that should be in as a condition where the wetlands delineation shall be advised to depict all wetlands on the entire track to be subdivided rather than the partial depiction?
Right.
Okay. And then one point oh two, I take it that should be in also?
Yes. One point oh, one point oh one and one point oh two.
And one point oh three as well, right?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, I think we've gone pretty much through everything. Right.
Yeah, right, and we have no exception to that.
And then two point oh four, two point oh five should be in as well, right?
That's correct.
Three point oh six, I guess, should be in as well. Three point oh seven?
That's correct.
That's that's the only questions I have for John.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, who wants to go next?
Traffic?
Traffic next, okay.
Good evening, Jeff Lamro from Aurora and Associates. I have a memo dated the nineteenth of July and basically there are there are four comments. Most of them deal with the amount of parking that's proposed on the site. And which is not small. However, apparently the applicant feels as though it is necessary. The question for the applicant about your NJDOT permit. Have you submitted? Have you gone through pre-app? Bruce, what what can you tell me?
Yeah, we submitted to the state for the lot subdivision. So we're waiting to hear back from them on any technical comments they might have on that. And that spurs any access permit revisions that are necessary for.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
Is it on?
Hello?
Yeah, it's on. Sorry, yes, we submitted to DOT for the lot subdivision application, which is necessary because we are doing a subdivision on the existing lot. And once that application gets reviewed by DOT and any technical comments addressed, they will reissue the actual access permit for that driveway. And if there's any comments for any of the work that we're doing on the state highway, we'll be addressing them and getting their approval.
Okay, good, thank you.
So are we making that a condition?
Yes, an NJDOT access permit or letter of no interest.
Because I don't think, you know, we want all that traffic coming out on Canal Point Boulevard, so.
No, that's, yes, ma'am.
Jerry?
Yeah, hold on one second.
Yep.
Now, Jeff, with respect to paragraph one, the the condition that I saw was that last sentence of the second paragraph, both the lot subdivision approval by DOT and the highway occupancy permit should be terms, should be terms of the approval.
Yes, Jerry, thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
Would it be easier to generalize that to just say we need DOT permits, permit approvals instead of specifying exactly which ones in case for whatever reason there may be, that may not be the exact permit that's necessary?
I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
You okay with that?
But the approval must include access to Route one.
Absolutely, yes.
So whatever the condition is, please make sure that's in there. Jerry, you got that? Yep. Okay, any other conditions?
No, I'm just, I'm just happy to see that they are going to be looking at the Canal Point Boulevard intersections as part of each building coming in. I think that that's a good check and balance. Other than that, I have no further comment.
You're you're okay with parking spaces?
I I believe that parking spaces are expensive enough. They they wouldn't build them without without a good reason, sir.
Anybody? Okay. Dan, you're up.
I'm sorry, if I just have one more question for Jeff. Jeff, on your paragraph two about the bank parking spaces, is there anything in there that you think we should put in?
No, no, Jerry, I think that we're okay with that.
Good, thank you.
Good evening. My report was July eighteenth, and I don't believe there's any conditions. It's all informational or waivers, which they thoroughly discussed.
No conditions and you're okay with their landscaping, their berms, their trees, everything like that?
Yep, that's what comment one, yes.
Are you you're okay with the view from on the other side of Canal Point?
Yeah.
As far as how much they're putting?
Yeah, it's, there's a berm, first, there's a berm on the residential side, berman landscape on the residential side of Canal Point Boulevard. And then on this side, the parking, the actual parking they're going to build, not the bank parking, is over three hundred feet from the road. And they will be the existing vegetation preserved, and then they'll be planting a stormwater basin in between. So I think it's going to be well buffer. You still see the building, don't get me wrong, but I don't think we're trying to hide the building.
Well, I mean, there's a building there. I don't think we want a twenty-four foot fence. It would have to be fifty-eight. Depends on the angles. Okay. We heard from all the professionals, there are the applicant. At this time, I would like to open it up to the public to comment on this application.
If I can, if I can ask John another question, John. In terms of the the geotech memo where they ask about the revisions of a set of the descriptions of certain easements, those all should stay in, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just in terms of the the memo by Chief Lynch, do we want to put in the normal stuff about the lockbox, et cetera? I take it we do.
Yes, the lockbox has been added to the plans already.
Oh, okay.
The remaining comments, you know, certainly be a condition.
Okay. And what about the hydrants? Has that been? Is that everything copacetic with that, with the hydrants?
Yeah, it's some of the dry hydrants as well, so that could be part of a condition.
And what would the condition say?
That could be part of the condition.
Okay.
That hydrant locations will have to be identified with the Director of Emergency Services.
Okay. Hold on.
And the sprinkler systems that Chief Lynch recommends will be installed. Are those on the plans already?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so a condition would be that they'd have to be added to the plans.
Okay, and then under water supply for fire protection, applicant must provide the fire department stand pipes throughout the subterranean park and garage. Are those on the plans at this point?
Not yet, no, but they will.
Okay, so we'll add that. Okay, and then just the only other things I have is that Greg had indicated that conduit will put in place for the for possible future installation of solar panels on the roof. Is that is that already on the plans? Dan says no. Okay, so we'll add that. And and then I'll put in that it's going to be subject to the hotel tax. I know everybody agreed it already is, but I think we'll put it in. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
You covered Chief Lynch?
Yep.
Thank you. For testimony and we heard from our professionals, I'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public wishes comment on this application? Have any questions, comments, please step up to microphones, state your name and address and I give you three minutes or fifteen minutes total. CN, no, I'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll move to close the public comment.
Second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Any, any names? Okay, public meetings closed, okay. Anybody questions? For the applicant or professionals or just in general, any issues? Seen a lot of shaking of heads, maybe because it's eleven thirty. I've asked a few questions, so I'm good. You're good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Jeff Lamro. Jerry, could you add as a condition, please, that Title thirty-nine enforcement would be on the site?
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Our attorney has stated that he's going to add that Title 39 enforcement. Okay. Jerry, you have all the conditions. I'm not going to ask you to go over all of them.
Right. So then, any motion that any member of the board chair chooses to make for approval would be approval of the proposed amendment number six to the preliminary preliminary A, a preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision approval, the two variances, both relating to the Route 1 setback, the whole series of waivers, of which there are numerous, that is the design waivers and several submission waivers. Absolutely.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application of all conditions, requirements and variances that were requested by the Westmans of Planning Board.
Okay, motion by Rob Laverro. Please call the roll.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Ms. Spary?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Mandel?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, general public.
We didn't adjourn yet. At this time, I'd like to open it to public comments on non-agenda items. Please step up to the microphone. Any member of the public wish to step up to the microphone? Going once, going twice. Meeting adjourned.